Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is May 1st, 2024. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the invocation. Pledge allegiance by Councilmember Carr.
Thank you. Please bow your heads with me. As we gather today, we recognize our diverse community woven together by threads of unity, resilience, and shared purpose. We lift up our city council members, guiding them with clarity and insight as they navigate the path of leadership. May they lead with integrity, compassion, and commitment to the common good of all citizens. We extend our gratitude to the dedicated city staff who work hard behind the scenes to ensure smooth functioning of our community. Grant them strength, patience, and wisdom in their service. We honor our military and first responders who answer the call to aid and protect our way of life. Surround them with your protective embrace, guiding them safely through every situation they face. And let us not forget our fellow citizens, the heartbeat of our city. May we foster understanding and cultivate a spirit of cooperation as we work together to build a brighter future of Cape Coral. Amen. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the world.
Mayor Gunter.
Here.
Councilmembers Carr.
Here.
Hudson.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Long. Shepherd.
Here.
Steinke.
Here.
Welsh. All present.
Thank you very much. Next item, item five, is changes to the agenda. I do have two particular changes. One, public hearing item 10B1, ordinance 2024, has been removed due to an amendment request to remove the arcade language and will be reintroduced at tonight's agenda under Introductions, which is 10C2. I also have another request that we move item 9B1, which is the item of the revised meeting calendar, to move that particular item up to and after citizens' input but before the consent agenda. That's the only changes. I have Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After several discussions with the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission regarding the Burring Owl Habitat Protection Grant, which is Consent Item 16, Resolution 143-24, I'd like to remove that item from business this evening. It is not that we do not want the grant or want to move forward with the program. However, we are looking to see if there's an opportunity to put these properties under the ownership or under the programming of a perpetual land trust. And as it's written now, the city would maintain ownership. So as we work through some little bit more details with FWC, I think it would be premature to vote on this at this time.
Okay. Thank you. And also, I see Councilmember Shepherd.
Yeah, I wanted to see if we can add something to the agenda. I wanted to talk about the donated medium program. We have a risk of maybe losing some people interested in investing in that program. And I just wanted to have a small conversation about that.
Mr. City Attorney, are we allowed to add an item to the agenda? I know we've removed several items before. Are we allowed to add?
You could add the item if there is. If there is consensus of the council.
Okay. All right, so we have changes for the agenda. We have a public hearing item that we are removing, 10B1, ordinance 2024, and that will be moved to the introductions under 10C2. We have removing Consent Item Number 14, and we also have the relocating the item 91, Revised Meeting Calendar, and put that in after the citizens' input but before Consent Agenda. And then we have the request for Councilmember Shepherd to have a discussion. I guess we would put that particular item under new business. And that looks like all the changes, so I will entertain a motion with any or all of those changes.
I apologize. Before, I believe you said Consent Item Number 14 was being removed. It's Consent Item Number 16.
16, okay. And what was that? Because I didn't have it in front of me.
Consent Item Number 16 is Resolution 143-24, which is an approval of a memorandum of agreement between the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission and the Fish and Wildlife Foundation of Florida, Inc., and the City of Cape Coral and the Cape Coral Friends of Wildlife for Burring Owl Habitat Protection, as was requested by the city manager for its removal to allow for additional modifications.
Okay. So with that being said, I'll entertain a motion for all of those or any of those?
A motion to approve with a plethora of changes.
Okay.
Second.
All right, Madam City Clerk, please call the world.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
Hudson.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is item number six with recognitions and achievements. 6A is Community Recognition Award, which is the Guardian Angels for Special Population. And I will turn that over to Mr. City Manager. It's over here on this side. She probably doesn't know.
Thank you all for coming tonight. It's my honor tonight to present the Community Recognition Award to the Guardian Angels for Special Populations. Guardian Angels is a volunteer 501(c)(3) organization that provides support to the City of Cape Coral's Frida B. Smith Special Populations Center. Guardian Angels has raised funds through community-wide fundraising events and grants since 1996. Fundraising and support events include an annual special populations fashion show, an auction, and an annual golf classic for special events populations. The organization strives not only to provide funding for our special populations community, but also to increase community awareness of the support provided at the Special Populations Center. They meet the second Tuesday of the month at 6:00 PM excluding July, August, and December at the Special Populations Center and are always looking for new members. Thank you to Guardian Angels for Special Populations for all that you do.
On behalf of the Board of Directors and the participants that attend the Frida B. Smith Center, it's an honor to partner with our city.
Okay, the next item for recognitions and achievements is 6B, Award Presentation to the City of Cape Coral Utilities Department. Mr. City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jeff Pearson, Utilities Director. Gives me great pleasure to announce that the City of Cape Coral this year at the 2024 Florida Water Resources Conference was awarded the David W. York Greater Than 15 MGD Reuse System of the Year Award. And we also were awarded the Reuse Project of the Year Award for the Kalu Sachi Connect Project. I'd like to introduce Mr. Dustin Chisholm, who is a Director-at-Large for the Florida Water Environment Association. He'd like to say a few words.
Well, this is my esteemed honor to present these awards to Jeff and, you know, the city this afternoon. This is really, to me, the best part of my job in this volunteer position is to honor the outstanding water and wastewater professionals that really provide the foundation for all of every society, really. So the Water Resources Reuse and Resiliency Committee honors utilities, customers, and organizations for their commitment to and their accomplishments in developing, using, and/or maintaining exemplary reuse programs. The Reuse System of the Year has four size categories. The City of Cape Coral has won the largest size, which is greater than 15 million gallons per day, and which is based on their permitted wastewater treatment plant total capacity. The award category is open to all reuse systems that provide beneficial use of reclaimed water. Evaluation criteria include reclaimed water quality, innovation, and beneficial uses of reclaimed water, and public education and outreach. I do see a lot more awards coming your guys' way for the Kalu Sachi Connect. That is really an incredible engineering and construction achievement and wonderful project to be part of, so.
Okay, the next recognition and achievements is item 6C, FEMA updated, provided by Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a brief update tonight. So yesterday, we started our series of code enforcement cases on the properties that FEMA had requested or documentation or alleged unpermitted work. Want to let you know that we have had just about every outcome that is possible in those hearings. We have had some cases dismissed because there was no work done at the house and no violation of any permitting requirements. We have had some owners who had permits but had not turned in FEMA packets, and so they are being provided an opportunity to complete that work and submit it to the city. And then lastly, we have had some people that have been found who have done some work without permits and without FEMA packets. And in that case, we've had some identified some work that was before Ian as well as after Ian. So we've seen kind of a mixed bag on the results of the hearings, but we have seen just about every example possible. We have turned in on the 206 properties that we need to turn in documentation to. We have already submitted two batches to FEMA. We've received one batch back already with no significant indication of any problem, so that was promising to us. And we have a meeting tomorrow with FEMA to turn in another batch. Staff is continuing on having on the road to have all documentation turned in. On the original timeline of May 9th, there was a 30-day extension granted, but we are working towards having everything in under the original timeline to show our commitment to the program. That concludes my update on the item.
Okay, thank you. Any questions regarding that matter? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item seven, which is Approval of the Minutes. Do we have a motion regarding the minutes from the regular meeting of April 17th, 2024?
Motion to approve.
Did I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Item eight is citizens' input time. Maximum of 60 minutes is set on the input of citizens. On matters concerning city government, three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name. Also, please remember to address as a collective body, as not an individual. We'll use the podium to my left, your right. And go ahead, sir, you can go first.
Yeah, Dave Callis, I still live in the Cape for now. My first, I'm just going to read what I got. "After contemplating on the stipend and realizing you're all self-employed, I feel it's a huge injustice to the public in this city. You're subsidizing your income while everyone else is suffering from the injustice of our government." Okay. Also, I disagree, and many other people agree with me, that to have the meeting at nine o'clock in the morning benefits none of the people in the city. Or if it benefits any, it's minimal. Okay? Most of the people are either working or whatever, the doctor's appointments or whatever they have to do. So if you're looking for a way to get less people to come, I will always be able to be here. So just so you know, okay? And I also heard something that, it's just a heads up, but I heard a little birdie whispered in my ear today, and I was pretty excited about it, actually. But I heard that there are a lot of lawsuits coming. So welcome to Cape Coral.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Hello, all of you. Sally Flash, I live on Beach Parkway. I was at J.C. Park, of course, last Saturday, April 27th, to watch the Cancer Awareness Walk/Run event. The park was, of course, full of people, including athletes, their family, and their friends. It was very freeing to have the south end of the park road along the river closed off to that traffic while the road was used as a start and finish of the race. I actually support closing off that portion of the road and keeping the north side open for cars to travel into the park and face the river. This is very ADA compatible, and it's a nice compromise. South side of the park for the people, north side for cars to pull in at the river's edge. Now, there were 227 cars that day, because I counted them, and the overfull lot was in great use. This is a lot where you want to put the amphitheater, closing it off for future parking. With your new parking of 157 spaces or so, there'll be no more room for this wonderful event or any of the other monthly walk/run races that occur there. This event worked on this hot day because of the park location by the river and its cooling breezes and all the shade. No one stood in the hot sun. Your arborist has noted the public's love of the Australian pines, and he has suggested that you remove them a few at a time each year while frantically planting new trees inland as fast as possible. Listen to him and involve him in planting the new trees for the park. I talked at length to a representative at the EPA about the park plans, specifically that the removal of the Australian pines along the riverbank would destroy the coastline of the living and protected flora and fauna. She said that perhaps the EPA would recommend keeping the pines along the river to prevent such destruction. The pines have a lifespan, please honor it and keep the pines by the river while planting trees in the park. The trees are over 50 years old, and they will show their age in the near future. In your plan, where are the picnic tables and the grills? Where is the walking path that circumvents the whole park? Where are the benches that are along the park now, along the path now? Many people need these benches and they rest on them. Think more deeply and environmentally about this park and the people from all over the Cape who use it before you, eight of you, act.
Thank you.
Evening. My name is Steve Willie. Excuse me. My wife and I have been coming to Cape Coral for 20-plus years. We've been full-time residents for the last five. I'm not opposed to the changes or improvements to J.C. Park, but I am adamantly opposed to the commercialization of, by the city's own definition, a quiet neighborhood park. A park that sits in the middle of over 1,000 homes, the majority of which are 55 and older. A park that can only be accessed by scenic Beach Parkway, which is really, in reality, primarily serves as a driveway to those homes. A park that by area alone barely qualifies for anything but a neighborhood park. Let's face the facts, they're trying to shoehorn too many things into a small area. And for what? The almighty dollar. Two words were never spoken, follow the money. Are we expected to believe a private development group comes forward with promises of paying the bills, excuse me, and providing financing without the hopes of turning a profit? The city's motivation can only be the same, the almighty dollar. Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers, the people of this city, including those that elected you, are not naive. The food and truck bistro plan appears to be nothing more than smoke and mirrors. They'll ultimately fail and expose the true plan for a full-scale bar and restaurant, such as the boathouse or the overtime sports pub. If I were a business that operates restaurants and bars, why would I invest in developing a food truck park with a bistro that only sells alcoholic drinks and ice cream unless there were a bigger plan? And now the city is considering changes concerning marine fuel pumps, mandatory seawalls, and who knows what else? Is this more smoke and mirrors? And why all the secrecy? The RFP's been issued, nobody responded. Why is it such a secret who you're dealing with? At a previous meeting, I understood the mayor to say he wouldn't go back to the taxpayers after the recently passed park bond. Yet who's going to guarantee the bonds to fund this project if not the taxpayers? Perhaps this city has a plan. Perhaps this city slash private plan has merit, but not in J.C. Park. I've got a few seconds left. I'll talk about, I've heard council members compare this park and the sale of alcohol to the yacht club and the sun splash. But yet, my research shows that neither one of those are parks. In fact, right now, J.C. Park is a park according to your own zone map. So you can't compare selling alcohol in parks because you haven't done it yet. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kevin McGrail, District 5, 34-year resident and former councilman in Cape Coral. I'm here to speak on two topics tonight. One, the council time change. I am very strongly opposed to this. I can tell you, living in this city 34 years, it is going to cause some real problems with the working families in Cape Coral and your students. You have a youth council that won't be able to attend any of these meetings. This is adding a distance that this council should not be adding, particularly at this time, followed on the heels of the stipend. Please, please, do not change the time. Leave it at 4:30. It allows your residents to interact with this council. As far as staff overtime, they can shift their hours. I work a 24/7 job at hospitals. It was easy for me to change my times if I had to. So you should be no overtime or the people who are on salaries, it's not going to mean $1 difference. The second thing is that I want to present is that the biggest cities in this county, Lee County, Cape Coral, Fort Myers, and Bonita Springs, all have afternoon start times. Don't change it. Please don't change it. Fort Myers is at 4:30, Bonita Springs is at 5:30, and they meet twice a week or twice a month for voting meetings as well. Stay with the intelligent choice. Keep our meetings so the residents can interact with our council. And the second thing, I spoke before prior council to this when a lot of you were up for election. We used to have a candidate forum that was on the city's website that was sponsored by the city. It was not a political rally. It was never a political rally. It was always an opportunity for the residents to learn what the candidates' views were on a first-person basis. And unlike the websites, they weren't polished. It gave the residents an opportunity to see the candidates off the cuff answering questions from our editors at the two papers. It was the news press in the breeze. Please bring it back. It also lets the people who are working off-shift jobs and they can't go to all those forums, it gives them an opportunity to watch it at their leisure. Talk to your city manager. I have. He tells me it shouldn't be that difficult to bring this back. Please, bring it back for this next election. The only reason they shot me down at the last time was there wasn't enough time to bring it back before, for the election. There is this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Council Speech, May 1st, 2024. Hello, my name is William O'Eric, and I want to say I was happy to hear the Cape Coral City Council has finally decided to allow the voters of Cape Coral to decide whether or not the mayor and city council members should receive the huge pay increases they handed to themselves after dismissing the free citizen advisory committees. I am not happy with how much time, effort, and money the people of Cape Coral were forced to spend in order to have that issue brought to a vote. I, along with many others, am also not happy with a number of other decisions the mayor and the city council have made that will adversely affect the well-being of the people of Cape Coral, comma, such as the commercialization of J.C. Park. As everyone here knows, or should know, by requiring petitions in support of referendums or ballot issues to be signed by 15% of registered voters before being accepted, the mayor and the city council are able to run them. City like a mafia, because it is virtually impossible to obtain that many signatures on petitions in the time allowed. Therefore, in order to give the citizens of Cape Coral control over the mayor and the city council, we are creating an organized group of people who will be able to quickly collect the required number of signatures to successfully submit referendums or ballot issues to the city. The organization is called Cape Coral Conscience, because it will be the conscience of the city, and the first referendum will be to change the minimum number of signatures on referendum petitions from 15% to 5%, which is what it is in Jacksonville, Florida. Doing so will be the first step in allowing the voters of Cape Coral to stop the mayor and the city council in their tracks whenever they decide to ignore the needs and desires of the people. If anyone here wants to join us, please contact me. Thank you.
Thank you.
I look forward to it.
Hello, City Council. My name is Lori Lehman, and I want to draw attention to, on the ordinances, to 10C6. That seems to be, as the previous gentleman had said, a smoke and mirrors game to have to change the voting procedure so that you're not voting district, you're not voting citywide, you're only voting district-wide. And that's not right. People should be allowed to vote through the whole city. And then I also want to draw attention to this tentative meeting, regular meeting change. Instead of it being a committee meeting of the whole, number 13, the committee meeting of the whole, which on the calendar is scheduled for 10:30, you now want to call that a regular city council meeting? Yeah, what's that? The game to get the meeting times changed? I mean, the smoke and mirrors are getting ridiculous. There's got to be some transparency, and there isn't any. And that's really a sad state of affairs for our town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Judy Mitchell. I'm a Cape Coral resident and also president of Cape Coral Friends of Wildlife. We thought this was going to be a very happy May Day until late yesterday, when we were informed that the consent agenda, number 16, had automatically been pulled. We are terribly disappointed. We had emailed many of our members to attend this afternoon's meeting, and we were holding a celebration this evening. We respectfully request more information and a meeting with the city manager and mayor or whoever is possible to tell us why the change in this MOA with the Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission, the Fish and Wildlife Foundation, and the Friends of Wildlife was pulled from the consent agenda at the last minute. At the request of Fox 4 News, our interview celebrating the approval of this grant was still held with Colton Chavez at his request after we had notified him of the change in the consent agenda. As you all know, we have worked really hard for the last three years through our colleague, Carvallo, to finalize this agreement and to provide safe habitat to the city bird, the burrowing owl. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathleen Lopez, Beach Parkway. The J.C. Park project was announced last May. By then, the city council had spent $500,000 for the original plans. In October, approved another $650,000 for updated plans for the destruction of the number-one voted best park in the Cape to benefit commercial enterprise at the expense of the paying public. The cost of this destruction is not in the city budget. It is borrowed money that the public will have to repay with interest. When I moved here in 2008, there were protections for the people who lived here. We moved to Cape Coral, we tried to walk J.C. Park, but we were stopped by the Cape Coral police officer who told us all our parks and restrooms are closed at dusk due to the illicit sex and drugs that have been a problem at J.C. Park. So now, we close this park, and the police monitor it every night. As a result, the crime has stopped. Fast forward to 2024, no protection for citizens anymore, bringing all the crime again and then adding a bar, bistro, food trucks, transient boats, and an amphitheater. Now J.C. Park is open at night with restrooms open to criminals, vandals, homeless, and no police patrols at all. Illegal drugs have been found crushed and left on baby-changing tables. Used condoms are on the ground. Trash is left when there wasn't any when the park maintenance person left for the night. Feces has been smeared on the toilet doors, and porta-potties turned over by disgusting vandals, and a neighborhood bike was stolen. Our crime has increased dramatically, and that's before you've brought in all the rest. Those who refuse to learn from their history are doomed to make the same mistakes. Saturday, there was a wonderful TV news show. A big group of city arborists and a city council member planting one tree in Covelo Park. It's a new park, the city designed that has no accessibility to strollers, bikes, or handicapped people due to the shell-filled paths instead of dirt paths. This was a huge deal for the TV. On Earth Day, one tree was being planted because trees are so very important to our whole world, especially Cape Coral. But apparently, the hundreds of trees that are to be removed from J.C. Park are not important. They are not an influencer on our world or in Cape Coral's health. This Cape Coral park was voted number-one by the citizens of this park. Stop destroying it. Beach Parkway used to have a beach. Did you guys even know that? A local historian found the photo. It was washed away in a storm due to no Australian--
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kathy Davis, Fourth District. Greetings. I'd like to talk about the recovery efforts after Hurricane Ian with respect to the yacht club. This is my general impression of the way it should have happened. This is a timeline of statements by the city council and corresponding actions. First, debris is being picked up for homeowners, businesses, streets, canals, et cetera, and the yacht club area deserves a high priority for clearing debris out for the goal of bringing back the full 100% operation use of the space and amenities. The council would like to state debris collection is underway. Crews are at the yacht club. There's no exact timeline. Maybe the beach area and swimming area with portable restrooms will be accessible in three to six months. Then, in five months, the council announces with great fanfare that the yacht club beach is open. Go enjoy it. We got the parking areas clear. Our next goal is the picnic tables. A month later, council announces the picnic tables are in place. Residents can go and do the picnic thing and enjoy the view. The council is well aware of the awesome enjoyment that the yacht club beach provides. Next, we're working on permanent shower posts. Month after that, voila, another important goal's achieved. The council announces, next is the pier. The pier is so very important to Cape Coral. We are examining the structure and quality and et cetera. We should have the pier to be finished in nine to 12 months since the hurricane. The city council's role is to bring all the parks, and especially the beach, to 100% functionality. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other discussion for citizens' input?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Joe Kilrain, District 5, 20-year resident of the Cape. I think that because there are lesser people here today, you might get the impression that the trust factor is starting to be ameliorated, but I think that that's the incorrect impression. I think that there's a lot of distrust of council based on the activities of what has occurred over the last few months. And the way that this has and permeates affects almost anything that you're doing is really pretty profound. And as an example, I think that we talked about the water shortage up in the northeast Cape. I think that we originally were talking about that when you were having your January discussions. I haven't heard much about the follow-up on it. I know you're tracking it each week. The real concern is the sorting, is the hope that we can have water come and regenerate and replenish those, the aquifer up there, the mid-hawthorn aquifer. That's hope. The facts of the science are that the will that the South Florida Management Association shows is a trajectory that is profoundly going down. You're now on tipping point. You're bouncing off the top of the node development level, and you only have 20 more feet before you get to the node flow level. The node flow level, based on that geology up there, it's a very grainy geology. The structure isn't very profound. It will start collapsing very quickly. You never want to get to that point. The solution is getting people off their wells. And the two projects that can do that, but they're long-term based, are the recycle plant and also the, what you call Zone 6, getting utilities in up there. Both of those require a lot of upfront engineering. I think the original estimates are like $40 million, with respect to project costs of $350,001 billion. Very significant timelines involved. Two years on the, 18, two to two years on the engineering, four or five to get them implemented. But now's the time you've got to really start working on that. I know that we had called for status updates on that frequently. Haven't heard anything on it. I think to the extent that you can be transparent and report on a frequency on that, it's very important. It's going to build credibility with the residents. And the alternative to that is residents going ahead and having to dig deeper wells. When you do that, you start getting to high cost because the salinity is going to be higher. And in order to move that water into a allowable condition, you're going to have to put reverse osmosis in. So instead of assessments, maybe looking at $35,000 just for the distribution part of the UEP, you might have an incremental well cost of up to $20,000. Pretty soon, you'll be pricing residents out of the Cape. Thank you for your consideration. Please, please get it on--
Thank you.
Tom Coy. Greetings. Of course, as I've said before, stop development of J.C. Park and the yacht club. Now here's sort of an interesting way that I look at it, and I wish I would see this from council officials in terms of closing down the yacht club or changing it or doing whatever. So it's, imagine like, you know, I wish I could see at some point some news broadcast or something where there is an official that arrives at these parks, like J.C. Park, and they look at it and they say, okay, we've got a lot of people here. You know, all of the like trails, we've got people walking down the trails. We've got people down there on the shoreline. All the parking spots are used. We've got good handicap access. There's a, you know, like a party at the pavilion. And so, in my mind, you know, I would say, and I wish an official would say, that the park is doing what a park should do. That it's, that it's operating the way a park should. It's providing maximum value that a park does. And so then this park official would say, well, there's no need to change anything. There's no need to wisely not spend money there. So like the same thing with the yacht club, that you would, an official would arrive there, and they'd look at the situation, like the beach area, and they'd see all these people there at the beach. They'd see the people using the picnic tables. They'd see the picnicking. They'd see, you know, the enjoyment going on there. And so then they would say, yeah, this, this seems to be a wonderfully purposeful, well-used park, and it needs to stay that way. It's, there's, you know, you would say, well, you know, why would we spend money changing a park that operates so wonderfully, so perfectly? And so I think that should be like a rule, you know, that all you guys have, where you evaluate those situations. Where it seems, and I don't want to get into this, but it seems rather, it's, you know, it's about building. It's about making money. But, you know, where is that guy that says, this park is doing fine? And looking back at the ULI report, which is exactly what I'm talking about, is that the park is doing what it's supposed to do, and that, and so importantly, that the yacht club or J.C. Park needs to be a park duplicated somewhere else.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on citizens' input? Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizens' input? Okay, I don't see any lights. Hold on a second. Councilmember Shepherd.
Yeah, I'd like to correct one of the speakers about planting of trees. I was there that day at the park, and I'm pretty sure more than one tree was planted. I don't have the exact amount, but I was there, and it was more than one. And also, days prior to that, me and my son helped a nonprofit that planted over 500 trees in Cape Coral. So a lot of trees are being planted, and I appreciate that. And the 500-plus that were planted were along Veterans Parkway by a local nonprofit that has been doing that for years. The majority of the trees that you see along Veterans were planted by the nonprofit and citizens in our community giving a helping hand. So it was a lot more than one tree. So, thank you.
Councilmember Steinkie.
Thank you. Just a few things. One, the postponement of approval for Cape Coral Friends of Wildlife and the owl preservation, that's actually to make the transfer of the land a better transfer. And so it's not, it's not meant to eliminate it being done. It's changing the way that it's done for the benefit of maintaining that land for the owls. So it's not to eliminate it, it's to make it a better transfer. The, I was wondering, the request for candidate forum. Mr. City Manager, I know that you weren't city manager when that was stopped, but you've been around a long time. Do you remember the reason why they were stopped?
I don't remember the reason that it was stopped. I can tell you, I do plan on putting this on a COW item for the council to consider. I have spoken with ICMA, who is the professional organization for my profession, and I have the parameters upon which it can be done without any type of bias to candidates or political affiliations in a non-party affiliated race. So I do intend on having that discussion with you, and it will be added to a future COW.
Okay, great. Thank you. And lastly, as it relates to keeping the plans for, as it was stated, commercialization of J.C. Park under a blanket or dealing with smoke and mirrors there, just for the record, and I'll only speak for myself, I don't even know what that looks like yet. And the reason is because there's a cone of silence requirement when an unsolicited proposal is given to the city. And so until a process is completed, the details of the proposal that was submitted or any other competing proposals are kept, if you will, under wraps until everyone gets to hear it at the same time. And it's called a cone of silence requirement. Maybe our city manager, city attorney could put a little more detail on that as to why that is the way that is.
Yes, thank you. So in reference to the current circumstances, there was an unsolicited proposal that was submitted to the city. We comply with the statutory requirement for, for that provision regarding the unsolicited proposal. However, at this point in time, it's under negotiations. Because it is under negotiations, it is under a cone of silence, and it will not be removed from that cone of silence until such time that the matter is brought before the city council for approval of a contractual agreement with all of the necessary components involved with that proposal. So that is the reason why that remains. That is under our code. And so despite the representations here, they're actually misrepresenting the circumstances by way of which it is meant to be confidential and exempt until such time that the formal agreement has been negotiated so that does that get interfered with.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. Thanks.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just have a couple items that I need to clarify that were spoken about that were not factual. So the first thing was relating to the council's changing of the meeting times. Next week, on May 8th, we are changing a COW meeting to a regular meeting at 10:30. It was scheduled to be a COW because we have those after the CRA meetings. The reason for converting it to a 10:30 meeting, it was not supposed to be a regular meeting, but our utility department director was notified that the South Florida Water Management District, who supplies us with grants and issues, notice of funding availabilities, changed the rules for the alternative water supply grants this year. And in order for us to adopt our-- And in order for us to adopt our, our water supply plan in enough time for you all to adopt it, transmit it to the state of Florida, and get it back for a final vote, we either needed to set a special meeting or convert the COW to a regular meeting so we can hear the COW business, but also allow you to vote on it. So it was not done for any smoke and mirrors or to, to change anything. It really, it was nothing more than administrative efficiency so that we can be in a position to be awarded some grants from the South Florida Water Management District. With regard to the ADA access at JCPark, I've heard now for a couple of weeks that JCPark does not have any ADA accessibility. I have met with the project manager over this project and, and had the discussion with her regarding the design consultants. The new park plan fully meets ADA accessibility, has a drop-off on the north end right next to the water. And I, and I would also like to point out, one of our own council members had a forum with members of the JCPark group on a weekend. My project manager let me know that while she was there with a, a council member of ours, one of the members of the group in a wheelchair got stuck in the sand and had to have several members of the community lift her out of the sand in today's condition. So while there's been a lot of emotion tied to ADA, I would just want to reaffirm to you all that if you move forward with this, the park will meet ADA accessibility and will be in a better condition than having residents getting stuck in the sand today. And then lastly, there was a comment made about overtime in regards to the evening meetings. Through our collective bargaining agreement, I appreciate the comment. However, through our collective bargaining agreements with our labor unions, we are not allowed to alter shift hours to avoid overtime. It would be a violation of the collective bargaining agreement and an unfair labor practice. So I understand the thought process behind it. However, we have, I have constraints around that, that I must comply with in our collective bargaining agreements. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Also, with regard to the Friends of Wildlife grant, it was disappointing to me as well that it was removed at the last moment. But Mike, could you just, or even the city attorney, is there any risk due to this delay of any impact on receiving the grant money? No timeline issues at hand?
The, the reason for the, the timing of the removal, the phone calls and my, reaching out to FWC, I did not receive phone calls literally back to yesterday when I was meeting with some of the council members in my Tuesday meetings. I, I was stepping out to take those calls. So we, we were trying to get this done beforehand, but they literally called me yesterday.
Do you have a?
There is no, there is no risk at all. The, the money is still in the foundation. The money is still to be awarded. It's just the execution that we have to work out.
Understood. Is there any timeline for coming back to council for approval at this time?
I don't have a timeline. I can tell you the process. The process that was discussed with the FWC is for us to supply them with accredited land trusts that they will review and approve, and, and then we will amend the agreement to have that, that be in the agreement. So we, we, we have already discussed the process. We've discussed impacts to the grants. And so we, we have the, the path forward. I do not know lo, they did tell me that once they, they get the, and we do make changes, it is going to have to go back through their legal. So I don't know if that took 30 days in the past, or if that was a one-week issue. So I don't have the timeline, but I know the process.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing the other lights on, we'll move on to item nine, which is business. The first item of discussion we moved up in the agenda was changes to the 2024 and 2025 meeting calendar. Just to give a, a little bit of a background, on April 3rd, 2024, at a regular meeting, council member Cosdun received a second from council member Welsh to work with staff to bring forward a council vote on an update to the council's regular meeting times from 4:30 to 9:00 AM. This topic was added also for a discussion on April the 10th for a committee of the whole. The meeting time update will be reflected on the meeting calendar submission effective after the 2024 summer hiatus. During that committee of the whole, there was a majority consensus to move forward. In addition to the time change included our suggestions or change, proposed changes on the attached 2024 city council meeting schedules, which consist as follows. There was a meeting scheduled, a committee of the whole meeting, that was scheduled on May the 8th next week for a top, topics of discussion with, with the council at the committee of the whole meeting. There was a time-sensitive matter that needed to be heard on that particular date. So we had two options. We have a CRA meeting at 9:00. We had a committee of the whole meeting, I believe, scheduled at 10:30. So our options, since that was a voting item that we had to discuss, that city management was bringing forward, we had two different types of scenarios. One was to keep the CRA meeting at 9:00, the committee of the whole meeting at 10:30, and then schedule a special meeting thereafter, probably at 1:00 or 2:00 that day. I went to the city attorney, and I said, instead, instead of having three separate meetings, can we change the committee of the whole meeting to a regular meeting, which will be a voting meeting then? So we could still hear the same topics at that meeting as the committee of the whole. Then that would also give us the opportunity to have the discussion that the city manager needed to have, which was going to need a vote to move a particular item forward. So the city attorney said that we could make that change. Instead of having those three meetings, we'll just change the committee of the whole to a regular meeting, and we'll just add that one item that needed to be discussed. So that's why you see that particular change. Also, it was, I believe, discussed before by council to move the budget workshops, which are dated for June the 6th and June the 7th, to the council chambers. So we didn't change the dates. The only thing we did was change the location. Also, the city manager made a recommendation to delete two particular meetings, or, which was normally our last meeting in June, which is June the 12th, and our first meeting back from hiatus, which was Wednesday, July the 10th. He made that recommendation. I'll let him speak to it if he'd like, but it was basically to coincide with the Lee County School District's summer break for the staff members and, and council, I guess, that have children that would be off during that time period as well. So that was his recommendation to eliminate those two meetings, but add meetings later on. So there's no deficiency in meetings. We're just having additional meetings thereafter. One thing that I did notice when I was reviewing the original proposal, that our last meeting, if we made that change of a regular meeting, would have been June the 5th, and our next regularly scheduled council meeting would have been July 24th. So that caused some concern with me almost a month and a half of not having a regular meeting. We did have a committee of the whole that was scheduled prior to that, I believe, on the 17th. So my recommendation was to make those meetings regular meetings. So we still, that, that meeting back on the 17th would be a regular meeting, voting meeting, instead of the committee of the whole. My original suggestion was on the 17th to have a regular meeting, on the 24th to have a committee of the whole, and on the 31st to go back to a regular meeting. But then our city clerk informed us that on July 24th, there is a mandated meeting for the annual assessments that we need to have. So therefore, the 24th couldn't be a COW meeting. So in lieu of all that information, we made July 17th and July 24th a regular meeting, and made the 31st, July 31st, a committee of the whole meeting. I believe there are one particular date for CRA, a July CRA meeting date will probably have to be analyzed and updated as a result of the changes that we've mentioned here of. So that's the little bit of the background up to this point. Since this is council member Cosdun's ordinance that she's been working with, I will turn the floor over to her first, and then go to the city manager in case he wants to add anything to, to my synopsis. Councilmember Cosdun.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not going to talk for too long because I did most of my talking at the committee of the whole meeting where we brought this forward. I just want to point out, we have a list of all the municipalities and counties that have 9:00 meetings, and the majority of our peers do it at 9:00. So it's not like we're an outlier by doing this. I just want to make that clear. I also want to say, I don't think I should have to say this, but my intention is not to hamper public participation. And I don't think that's anyone's intention up here. So hopefully, we can move this forward. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, the only thing that I would say is the, absolutely, the, the request that I made and requested and spoke about was to look at the city, Lee County School District's calendar, and for the meetings that we had during spring break, winter break, and summer break, to try and align as best as possible those two calendars. This way, not only for council, but also for my staff, we can enjoy some time with our families when those breaks occur. And in, in a, in a discussion with the mayor, the two meetings that we would have had to do that over the summer break, we were able to replace them with other meetings. So there's no net loss in the, in the quantity of meetings between the administration and the council. So it's a net neutral change, but provides for additional time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Steinke.
Thank you. I, with the number of changes that, that we're talking about, I would hate for this to be an all or nothing vote for me. The, the opportunity for citizens to comment on and provide input and perspective on the regular meeting changes from 4:30 till, till 9:00 o'clock has happened. And so I, I have some thoughts about that based on that feedback. So I'm hoping that that could be handled separately. The, looking back in time, when, and, and as I understand it, what's being called budget workshops on the calendar on January 18th and 19th, am I incorrect that that, that is actually what used to be called the retreat? Because I don't see the retreats on here that would have normally been in January and in June, right before we would go on hiatus.
That's correct. The terminology used in the past for summer retreat, winter retreat, the term retreat gave people a different idea of what kind of meeting we were hosting. And so when we looked at the focus, budget seemed like the best terminology to use. So in January, we have a two-day budget workshop. And then in the summer, just before hiatus, we have the two-day summer, or budget workshop.
Gotcha. Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification. The other budget workshops that show up later in the schedule that begin at 2:00 PM, it was my understanding that we were going to have those workshops that would bridge, if you will, day and night. I think we, I think we talked about a timeframe of four to seven that allowed citizens to be here, those that would work at night, to be able to come from the four to five component, and those that worked during the day to come here after work. And it looks like, it looks like those are now being moved to, to the daytime as well. Am I the only one that remembers that we talked about with the sunset of the Budget Review Committee, that we would make sure that we had the availability of citizens being able to participate during those budget reviews?
We developed a town hall. It's going to be on July 25th from 4:00 to 8:00 o'clock. That's the, that's the meeting you're talking about. It's a town hall where we will encourage residents to come in, speak with each one of the departments with regard to their budgets, have a, basically a loop budget approach with that town hall for the budget. And then our budget workshops themselves have always been during the, well, in the, whatever time is set for them. We've normally done them in successive weeks in August.
So that town hall wouldn't be on this schedule then?
That town hall is not on the, on your schedule as it exists, but it's, it's on as our budget schedule.
Okay. All right.
It's not a, it's not a council meeting.
Okay. Thank you for that, for that clarification. And with the, with the thought of the removals of the meetings to coincide with Lee County School District's summer break, would that not, would that not also change hiatus dates as far as when hiatus started and stopped?
Mr. City Manager.
It, it bumps up the front end and extends the back end.
So, so would, so would?
So it would start on June 7th as opposed to the 13th? And instead of ending on July 9th, it would end on July 18th, uh, 17th?
And so should, should that also be changed? Should?
Oh, the note? Yeah, the note. I got, yep.
Absolutely. That's a quick fix. Thank you for pointing that out.
Okay. That, that's my only comment before we would vote on anything. So thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. Similar to Councilman Steinke, I'll separate my comments, schedule and timing of the meetings. But the schedule, the only thing that I see that's in conflict with at least our council rules is, is that there shall be not less than two meetings a month, voting, correction, two regular meetings per month. And in June, if the schedule change as proposed goes through, that would only allow for one regular meeting in June in 2024. I don't know if that can be changed just by council decision, but I'm just throwing it out there for discussion. And I do appreciate the logic behind it. I would support the concept, but it is contrary to our current rules of council that we, that we shall have two regular meetings a month. So just for discussion, we can vet through that. My other comments are associated with the time. As I stated before, I'm, I'm of belief to maintain status quo with the time in the evening. However, for the sake of compromise, I did propose, and I still propose, going one-on-one, one morning and one evening. Comments have been made about the difficulty and confusion. If we can work through this calendar modification, I think we can work through an every other week time change. Just my personal opinion. But I would be in support of a one-on-one scenario. And if, if not status quo, I would recommend just, or suggest that we consider one-on-one. So that's all I have today. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Shepard.
Yeah, the only part of it that I have a problem with is the meeting time. I've weighed the sad, I changed my mind a few times. I understand by changing it to 9:00 o'clock, it is, is better for business. It's, it's better for a lot of the business that's conducted and for different people that have to be here. And, but one of the things that I weigh out when I make my decisions up here is I take in all the input and weigh out all the variables. And I've heard a handful, a lot of people contacted me and say, let's keep it at 4:30. And I've literally heard no one call me and say, let's make it at 9:00. I've been to council meetings for over 20 years, and I can recall situations where there was topics that were going to affect the neighborhood. that were going to affect the neighborhood. And you would have citizens that would show up after work so that they can take part in the subject that was about their neighborhood or what they care about. And I don't want to add, I don't want to make it difficult for them to be involved. So the smart business decision would be to change it to 9:00 for us to be more business-friendly, which I would like to do. But I think my responsibility is for the citizen that has the problem, that wants to be here for whatever topic is of their concern. Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden?
I guess my concern right now, Mr. City Attorney, is bundling all this together into one vote, because I have no problem with the changes to the meetings, the additions, subtractions, where they fall, the height is changing. But I'm against moving the meetings to 9:00. Is there any way we can separate those two out so that we don't appear to be voting for something that we support?
Sure, there could be a vote that addresses the meeting schedule as it exists right now. If there is a consensus to do that, that could be done and then address the meeting time by way of a second motion and action that way. So yes, you can.
Well, if we can get a consensus, I would prefer doing that rather than voting against something that, you know, with the date changes that I support.
Okay, Councilmember Long?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to, I guess, provide some input here. Obviously, I've said it before, I support this. I'm not the driver here, but I do support the change to 9:00 a.m. and of course, the modifications. I wanted to just clarify, I guess, Councilman Shepard's. My understanding is that it wasn't necessarily driven specifically to cater to businesses. I don't know that that was ever the incentive here, and I know Councilwoman Cosin could speak to that more than the most. I think that was one of the potential things that would have benefited from the change to 9:00 a.m. There's a couple of other things that have already been set forth. I think staff time productivity was one of the things that was brought forth that I still continue to support and is why I continue to support it. On top of the fact that I've been here for many years, and the irony, I guess, in this is that forever, we've had them since I've been here at 4:30. And I can't tell you how many times that people have come in at 4:30 and complained that we have them at 4:30 and that we should have them even later, because people have to work. So we're always going to get those regardless of whether it's 4:30 or 9:00 a.m. So the pros outweigh the cons in that particular reason for me. If we were going to truly lean in and say, well, we don't want the residents to be out of work, a lot of them are still working at 4:30. So if we wanted to really lean in, it would need to be later in the evening so that you guys could truly practice what you preach and have these individuals come in when they are unable to work. So for those reasons, I will support it. I just wanted to kind of set that forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I won't go into my comments before. My comments hasn't changed since the Committee of the Whole Meeting. At that particular meeting, we had a consensus to move this item forward, so I'll continue to support it. I personally do not have a problem with separating the two. If we want to have a vote on the time and then come back and have a vote on the other changes, I'm okay with that. Or if someone wants to make a recommendation to do it all together, either way, I support the changes. I support the time change. So I'll be voting yes on both if they are separated. So with that, oh, I got Councilmember Welsh. I'm sorry, I didn't see your light on.
Yeah, I was just going to jump out of the gate here and make a motion to adopt the changes to the 2024 meeting calendar as far as dates only at this point. And just get that one out of the way. And then I guess, go back and do the time one second. So.
Second.
So that's just for...
Just the meeting calendar dates, not the times. A motion to adopt what's presented.
Okay. So the changes to the dates that are reflective, which are, just to try to summarize, so we're all on the same page. So your motion is to change the May meeting from a committee of the whole to a regular meeting. You are also, in your motion, is to change the budget workshops on June 6th and June 7th to be located here in council chambers. Also, to delete the days on June 12th and delete the regular meetings on July 24th, and to make the other changes in the calendar for the remaining part of 2024 calendar.
Yes.
Okay.
You said July 24th, and you meant to say...
You meant July 10th.
Well, the meeting schedule that I have here is for a regular meeting to occur on July 17th, a regular meeting to occur on July 24th, and a committee of the whole meeting to occur on July 31st.
Correct. But the ones eliminated would be June 12th and July 10th.
That's correct. What did I say?
You did. You said 24th.
24th. I'm sorry. Yeah, so we'll delete June 12th, 2024, and delete the regular meeting previously scheduled on Wednesday, July 10th, 2024. So is that your motion, Councilmember?
Yes.
And the second agrees?
Second agrees.
Okay. Is there Councilmember Carr?
Just, again, I just want to make sure that we're okay here. In other words, we have council rules, and I'm just curious. I mean, can we just modify it by motion in that motion? Or do we need to have a second motion to deviate from our current rules? Or how do we have to go through that?
I have a fix.
Or is there an issue with that at all?
I have a fix. I'm waiting for you guys to take action, and I have a fix for that.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I have a fix for that. I'm waiting for you to take action on this, and then I have a fix to correct that.
Okay, so with regard to my vote, how do I make a decision on how I want to vote? If we're going contrary to the rules, how do I make a vote without hearing your solution?
Well, the solution will ultimately be an amendment to the council rules. That's before you right now, adding one further clarification regarding that last sentence. I've got the proposed language already. It's been provided to the city clerk. I'll read it into the record. I just don't know where you guys are going. So once you do that, the next item will be in the consent agenda, and I'll ask that that one modification be made.
Okay. So just for my own clarification, if I vote yes, I'm not, I mean, I'm in violation of what our rules say in my vote. I'm supporting that change.
You won't be in violation because your very next action will be corrective.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other lights on, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Shepard?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, it looks like we have two other things on the agenda. I think there were some changes to the 2025 calendar as well. And also, we have the time. So let's do the time change in the meetings from 4:30 to 9:00 a.m. So with that, I'll either open it up for a discussion or a, or a motion on that particular item.
Make a motion to approve the times presented?
Second.
Calendar year 2024 and 2025.
For both calendar years.
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Shepard?
No.
Steinke?
Nay.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
No.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
No.
Four ayes, four nays, motion failed.
Okay. The next item, we made some changes to the 2025 schedule. I believe it coincided with the Lee County School District summer break. So I'll open up for any discussion or a motion for calendar year 2025. Councilmember Steinke?
Thank you. Just the same comment as in 2024, that would change the hiatus dates. So as long as we would make the similar change that we would for 2024 and 2025, based on the elimination of those meetings, then I'm good.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Okay. Madam City Clerk?
I did want to point out that we haven't actually identified the budget workshops in January yet, based on, I think it's legislative days in Tallahassee. We may have a conflict on the dates that city staff would like, but we'll come back to you in a completely independent request for that in the future, once it's ironed out.
Okay. Councilmember Steinke, his light's on, but I think that was from before. So with that, seeing no other discussion, entertain a motion for this particular topic, calendar year 2025.
Motion. So moved.
Is there a second? Councilmember Welsh, second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Steinke?
I just realized that we are approving this as written, and it is written that the regular meetings start at 9:00 a.m.
Thank you. So I'll amend, I'll change my motion, although I do think they should start at 9:00. I'm going to amend my motion to take the times off, and we'll just approve the dates for 2025.
Second agree?
I agree.
Okay. Any other comments, Councilmember Steinke?
Nope.
Seeing no other discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Oh.
After this.
After, okay. I'm sorry.
Nothing. The mayor and I were confused. I apologize.
Long?
Aye.
Shepard?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Councilmember Cosden?
I would like to talk about the alternating meetings concept that Councilmember Carr brought up. I think that's a good idea. And so I would like to make a motion. Now, I don't know how to word this motion, because every month is different. I guess there's two meetings in every month. Are there any that have more than two regular meetings? Okay. So then I would say that every other regular meeting would be at 9:00?
Commencing one. I apologize, Mayor.
Beginning on the date that we had set, July...
After the break.
Yeah. Okay. So would the first one be, yeah, so is it the first one of the month? The first one would be at 9:00.
So basically, you'd be making a motion modifying, do you want to do 2024 and 2025 together, or?
Yes.
So you'd be making a motion to amend the 2024 and 2025 start times for delineated encounters where the first meeting of the month, after you return back from hiatus, will start at 9:00, and thereafter would be 4:30. So it would be 9:00 for the first meeting, 4:30 for the second meeting. And that's the way it will continue on.
I'm not going to repeat all that, but that is my motion.
You could adopt the motion as set forth by myself.
There you go.
I'll second that.
Okay, I'll open that up for discussion. Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, let's figure out a way to confuse a community just a little bit more by having two different meetings and becoming probably the first municipality in the state that does that. I think we got to keep consistency with the start time. Had the vote gone at 9:00 a.m., fine, 4:30. But to start fluctuating the times of meetings just adds a lot of confusion, I think, to the community, and makes them work really hard to figure out when they should come and not come. So I'm not going to support two different meeting times.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepard?
Yeah, I just think it's going to add a lot of confusion. I don't see the good in it. I just think it's going to make it very confusing for citizens to know. Thank you.
Yeah, I have to agree. I think either we have them at 9:00 or we have them 4:30, switching back and forth. It's just going to be so confusing, I think, for the public. Is this the week that they're at 9:00? This is the week at 4:30. I support it at 9:00 a.m. I think that's the direction to go in. But as we see, we make all of our decisions by a majority vote, and that majority vote, that particular topic didn't get a majority vote. So I, you know, I understand that. And either way, I was going to be willing to be here at 9:00 or 4:30. Been here at 4:30 for the last six and a half years. I'll be here for the next two and a half at 4:30. So with that being said, I won't support that motion. Councilmember Steinke?
Thank you. I would tend to agree. Not only because of the confusion, but it was earlier, you know, stated that people will come because of a particular issue on the agenda. And so who's to say that that item's going to be on the agenda on that meeting date that happens to fall on the 4:30 time? So I agree that it's one or the other, and I'll maintain where I am. Based on all the feedback that I got from citizens, I'll stick with my 4:30 time on each one.
Okay. Seeing no other discussion, we have a motion second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, I'm sorry.
Can I just say something real quick?
Yeah.
I just want to point out, I don't think I'm going to change anyone's mind up here. I think we're all pretty much decided. But Port St. Lucie and St. Petersburg do this very thing, so it's not a new concept. And it's probably not confusing to the residents of those cities. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Madam City Clerk, can you clarify the motion, and then we'll take a vote?
So I have a motion for the 2024 and 2025 start times to alternate, beginning after the summer hiatus, with the very first regular meeting, 9:00 a.m. starting, and then rotating, alternating to 4:30, and so on to the end of each year.
Okay. With that being said, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Shepard?
No.
Steinke?
Nay.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
No.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
No.
Hayden?
No.
Three ayes, five nays, motion failed.
Okay. I think we beat that topic up enough. We will move on to the next item on the agenda, which I believe is going to be the consent agenda, which is item 9A. So with that being said, I will open the consent agenda for council to pull any items. No items are pulled. I will entertain a motion. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, before a motion is made...
I apologize.
Before a motion is made in regards to consent agenda, item number 19, there are modifications that are already on there with the action that has been taken by the council regarding the amendment to the calendar dates for 2024 and 2025. One further amendment that must now occur, as represented by Councilmember Carr, this is identified within your council rules, specifically under A, second paragraph, last sentence, where it states council shall hold not less than two regular meetings per month. That provision will be stricken through based upon the action taken. The substitute language that will then be inserted in its very same place will read as such. The city council shall hold its regular meetings consistent with the frequency requirements set forth in the city charter, and that will harmonize the action taken.
Okay. With that, I will open up for a motion for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the amended language in the second paragraph of Section A in Council Agenda Rules of Procedure.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Carr?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I was going to ask the poll 19 anyway. Maybe we could just, I apologize for delay with that, but...
Okay. So would the motion maker like to please revise their motion to...
I will rescind my motion.
All right. Would you like to approve all the consent agenda items with the modification that the city attorney outlined?
I will...
Except for number 19?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda with that item pulled.
Okay. Does the second agree?
Second.
All right. So Madam City Clerk, could you call the roll on that first, please?
Councilmember Steinke, can I confirm that your motion is to approve the consent agenda?
To approve the consent agenda with that item removed.
With 19 removed. Okay. And Councilmember Welsh, do you agree?
Yes.
That's the second. All right. Long?
Aye.
Shepard?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. You pulled the item. I'll turn the floor over to you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And again, I apologize for the delay. I had my light on, but I didn't get recognized before the city attorney... Yes, sir. Thank you. And again, I apologize for the delay. I had my light on, but I didn't get recognized before the city attorney modified the rules, so I apologize to both of you. I just wanted to talk about modifications that are being made tonight in the rules, and that has to do specifically with conduct of the public at meetings. And there's some descriptive, my understanding, I just want to get clarification from the city attorney that I'm on point, is that there is descriptive language about behaviors that has been added and also an appeal process for anyone that is removed from a meeting and not allowed to be back. There is a, we're now going to put in a, an appeal process that is through the special magistrate. Is that correct, City Attorney?
Yes, there's prohibited conduct where it's essentially an act of violence that will be a further basis for having the individual removed because it would be a violation of the court rules. In the event there is such conduct that does occur, you're absolutely correct. They can avail themselves of a special master process that is known as a post-deprivation hearing.
Okay, thank you. So this, this, I know some of the criticisms that we had with the recent modification to the ejection and the subsequent removal and not allowed to come back. This affords them an appeal process outside of us, the scope of city council?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve number 19 from the consent agenda.
With the modification
With the modifications outlined by the city manager related to these council rules and the meetings being aligned with the city charter.
Under, under A, second paragraph, last sentence swapped out.
Exactly that. Thank you.
Second.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, move on to item 9B, appointments to boards and committees. B1 is the audit committee. We have two vacancies on that particular committee. One is a regular vacancy. The second one is a alternate vacancy. We have one applicant, Wesley Kilrain?
Cockrain?
Cockrain? So with that, we can either hear from that one applicant or I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Cochran to the regular position on the audit committee.
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item two is the appointment for a community block grant citizens advisory board. We have one vacancy, one applicant. Madam City Clerk, I'll let you pronounce the name because I know I'll get it wrong.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have an application from Jessica Proix. I'm not certain that she has
So we only have one physician, one applicant. We can either hear from the candidate or I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
I like how you didn't use the name. Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item three is appointment to the planning and zoning commission. We have one vacancy for the alternate member. I believe we have two applicants. Madam City Clerk, are they here present today?
Let's see, as far as checking in, I had Mr. Estes check in. Mr. Martin, are you present? Okay, and Mr. Martin is here as well. If you'd like, I can call them up to the podium.
Yes, and what have we, what have we normally done as far as time period and give the candidates the opportunity, one minute? All right, so you have one, one minute to introduce yourself and advise council of whatever you'd like us to know to make our, help us make our decision. So, Madam City Clerk?
All right, I'd like to call up Edwin Estes to the podium.
Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. I'm a relatively new Cape Coral resident. Moved here last summer. I've gotten involved. I'm on the executive committee for the power squadron. Just attended the citizens academy, great program. Thank you very much for holding it. And I'm considering putting in an application to be a volunteer in the marine division for the Cape Coral police department. For the last 16 years, I have been a professor full-time at Mount Sinai National College in the Los Angeles area. We retired here to Cape Coral, and I'm interested in serving on the planning commission, planning and zoning commission. I have practiced land use law as an attorney previous to my work with the college. I am a previous council member, and for eight years I did enjoy dealing with planning commission appeals, dealing with land use issues. I'm also former judge pro temp in California. Attorneys volunteer to serve when judges cannot make the bench. I think I do have the acumen to serve, and I look forward to doing so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Jack Martin?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Jack Martin. I'm seeking an alternate position on the planning and zoning commission. Having moved to Cape Coral in 2000, I've seen the growth, the changes, and understand the challenges that the city faces. Growing pains, if you will, especially with a lack of commercial space and tax base of an incorrect ratio. I want to get involved with planning and zoning and share with the city my 30-plus years of experience in commercial real estate by bringing fresh ideas and my perspective on smart growth to the table. I appreciate your support in placing me as an alternate on the planning and zoning commission. Thank you. I welcome any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, that being said, we have two candidates. We'll do like we normally do. We'll go down our, our voting order, Madam City Clerk, and we'll each give one name, and we'll see where we end.
Long?
Estes.
Shepherd? Steinke?
Martin.
Welsh?
Martin.
Carr?
Martin.
Cosden?
Martin.
Gunter?
Martin.
Hayden?
Martin.
All right, that's two for Estes and six for Martin.
I'll entertain a motion to reflect that.
Motion to appoint Martin to the board.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd? Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Martin and Mr. Estes. Appreciate you putting your name in, and I know you're new to the community, so please stay engaged. Thank you. Okay, item four is youth council. Presently, we have seven junior vacancies and one senior vacancy, and I know that our office has tried to break that down a little bit for us so we have a little better understanding. I think the best way to approach this, we have 11 candidates that put in for the junior. I figured we'd address that first, and then we'll address the applicants for the senior position. So we'll break up to two. I just thought that would be easier for all of us. So I know typically, you know, we had interviews in the office with these particular individuals. Normally, they don't speak here at the council meeting, so do we still want to continue with that and just give our recommendation for the seven, and we'll go down our voting order? Or do we need to give them opportunity for one minute to speak? So I think that's your two choices.
I'd like, I think we could just go with our initial, we all, you all had interviews on the week.
Okay, that's what we've done in the past, and I agree. I just want to make sure that everyone was comfortable with that. So with that being said, Madam City Clerk, could you please go down the, the voting order, and we'll give seven, seven out of the 11 names.
Long?
So I've got Chigo, Fike Thaller, Halsey, Johnson, Riley, Salazar, Skorzak, and Upalori?
I think that's seven.
Is that seven? Okay.
So.
Skorzak.
Chigo, Fike Thaller, Halsey, Johnson, Riley, Salazar, and Skorzak.
Yep.
Okay. Shepherd?
My, my list is actually the same.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Chigo, Fike Thaller, Halsey, Johnson, Riley, Salazar, and Skorzak.
That's correct. Thank you.
Steinke?
Fike Thaller, Halsey, Johnson, Mparaganda, Riley, Salazar, and Upalori.
So that was Fike Thaller, Halsey, Johnson, Mparaganda, Riley, Salazar, and Upalori.
Yes.
Okay. Welsh?
Chigo, Fike Thaller, Halsey, Mparaganda, Riley, Salazar, Skorzak.
Chigo, Fike Thaller, Halsey, Mparaganda, Riley, Salazar, and Skorzak.
Yes.
Carr?
Fike Thaller, Halsey, Johnson, Mparaganda, Riley, Salazar, and Skorzak.
Fike Thaller, Halsey, Johnson, Mparaganda, Riley, Salazar, and Skorzak. Okay, Cosden?
Fike Thaller, Halsey, Johnson, Paraganda, Salazar, Skorzak, Upalori.
Fike Thaller, Halsey, Johnson, Paraganda, Salazar, Skorzak, and Upalari. Gunter?
Fike Thaller, Halsey, Johnson, Paraganda, Riley, Zurich, and Upalori.
Fike Thaller, Halsey, Johnson, Paraganda, Riley, Skorzak, and Upalori. Hayden?
Chigo, Fike Thaller, Halsey, Johnson, Mparaganda, Riley, Salazar.
Chigo, Fike Thaller, Halsey, Johnson, Mparaganda, Riley, and Salazar. All right, just a moment. I'll total up. All right, so that is four for Chigo, eight for Fike Thaller, eight for Halsey, seven for Johnson, six for Mparaganda, seven for Riley, seven for Salazar, six for Skorzak, and three for Upalari. So we have two with eight, we have three with seven, and two with six as the highest votes.
If I'm correct, Madam City Clerk, could you repeat the names with the highest vote?
Fike Thaller and Halsey with eight, Johnson, Riley, and Salazar with seven, and Mparaganda, and Skorzak with six.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to reflect these two.
I'll make that motion to reflect Fike Thaller, Halsey, Johnson, Mparaganda, Riley, Salazar, and Skorzak.
Second.
Is there any other council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Move on to the senior applications. We have four applicants, and we have one vacancy. We had the interviews in the office with these individuals, just like the other individuals. So Madam City Clerk, if you could just go down our voting order, and each council member will pick their one candidate to fill that one vacancy.
Long?
Ortiz Rivera, Rivera?
Shepherd?
Ortiz Rivera.
Steinke?
Malanga.
Welsh?
Ortiz Rivera.
Carr?
Ortiz Rivera.
Cosden?
Ortiz Rivera.
Gunter?
Ortiz Rivera.
Hayden?
Ortiz Rivera.
So that was one for Malanga and seven for Ortiz Rivera.
I'll entertain a motion for that.
Motion to approve Ortiz Rivera.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Cosden? Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, I see your light on.
Your Honor and counsel, respectfully, I request, can we keep the names that, of the people that weren't selected tonight as an active list in case someone does have to leave the board? And then we already have vetted applicants available to bring back. We have, you have allowed that in the past, but I didn't want to make the assumption.
Is council okay with that?
It's a great idea.
Yep, looks like you got eight, eight heads shaking, yes.
Thank you.
All right, one last thing on this topic of discussion. We have the youth council liaison, which is a council member who's the liaison and also an alternate liaison member for the youth council. I think the thought process here and the chair of that, or the liaison now is Councilmember Cosden. She can probably explain it better than I, but I think the, the goal here is to put an individual council member in place that will be there for the whole calendar year. Is that, is that correct?
That's right, because whoever gets appointed, if they leave this office in November, it has to be a new person appointed, and I think it's good for these kids to have a consistent liaison for the whole school year. So I think we should.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I agree. I agree 100%. So with that being said, I will either entertain a, someone who wants to volunteer or if there's a nomination for a council member by another council member, I'll open the floor up for a discussion for the liaison position first. Councilmember Hayden?
I would like to nominate Councilmember Steinke for the liaison position.
You okay with that, Councilmember Steinke?
I'll accept the nomination.
Okay, and I believe I heard a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other nominations or volunteers? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to appoint Councilmember Steinke as the youth council liaison.
Motion to approve Councilmember Steinke as liaison.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, the last discussion on this item is a alternate liaison member for this position, so I will open the floor up for any nominations or anyone who would like to volunteer. Boy, don't everybody jump at once. Councilmember Steinke?
Um, considering, uh, his position, and, uh, certainly having, having children, I would, I would like to nominate, uh, Councilmember Long.
Second. Let's do it. Let's do it, he said. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, that, uh, Councilmember Long, uh, would be the, uh, uh, alternate liaison, uh, for the youth council for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second.
All right. Uh, seeing no other discussion, Madam City Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Long?
Aye.
Shepard?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item, uh, nine C is, uh, follow-up items for council. None are listed. Uh, any follow-up items the council has? Okay, seeing none, uh, we'll move on to nine D, uh, new business. Uh, the first item, uh, on the, for, for new business, Councilmember Shepard brought forth, uh, was a adopt the median program. And before I turn the floor over to, uh, Councilmember Shepard, uh, for his discussion, just to give, uh, council a little bit of background, uh, last week I had received a, uh, email from Mr. Don Apkin, who's a part of the adopt the median program. I believe they established a nonprofit organization that does adopt the median, uh, throughout the city. Uh, he did come to the C-TAC meeting, uh, last week, uh, asking, uh, we had adopted policies of how the adopt the median program, uh, works in the city, and, uh, he had asked for some changes, uh, on those, uh, adoptions. We had a short, brief discussion at the C-TAC meeting, and a recommendation that I made, since those, uh, policies were already voted on and, uh, implemented, uh, not only by C-TAC, but, uh, by staff, that, uh, that would probably be a discussion that we should have at a council meeting, uh, in the future, or a committee of the whole, is I believe what my recommendation was. Um, I did get a, an email last week, uh, from, uh, council member, or not council member, from, uh, Mr. Apkin, who stated, uh, that, uh, he would like to have that particular topic, uh, added to, to a meeting. He was under the assumption that it would have been, I believe, last week, uh, uh, I'm sorry, this week's meeting. Um, I did have a discussion with the city manager, uh, on this particular topic. Um, his recommendation, uh, when I spoke with him, was to have a meeting, uh, after our budget workshop, uh, on June the sixth, June the seventh, because apparently he was going to bring, uh, some type of a discussion forward involving median beautification, uh, to this council, uh, to, uh, see what the consensus was, and he would prefer to wait until after that meeting, uh, before, uh, we added it to the agenda, so that's why it hasn't been added to the agenda under the recommendation of the city manager. Uh, so with that, uh, I will turn it over to Councilmember Shepard, and then I'll turn it over to, uh, our city manager. Councilmember Shepard?
I, uh, I wholeheartedly agree with everything that the, the mayor has said. Um, what I will add to that is that the program, um, is something that we've been working on for, uh, many years, and, uh, we knew it was a, uh, learning process, and that we would hit roadblocks and, uh, you know, along the way, and, and have learning curves as well. Um, so one of the things that came up at the C-TAC meeting, um, would actually, uh, hinder, hinder the program, it would hurt the program, because there are people who have, people and organizations who have donated money, and, um, have been waiting for many months now, from six months or longer, from what I've heard, and that this additional delay might make, uh, is upsetting to them where they would rescind their investment. And I, I don't think, um, our goal in any way as a C-TAC, uh, council, uh, was to hinder people from investing in our city and donating. Um, I just believe that, like I said earlier, it was a learning curve. We knew we were going to learn as we go along. So what I wanted to bring forward is that we let uh, people who have already donated, um, continue and not, uh, have that hindrance or roadblock, and, um, go forward with, uh, everything else, and, uh, let that affect, uh, future, um, uh, people that donate. So I, I just didn't want to put a bad vibe out there to people and, and institutions that have already written checks. So, um, like I said, we're learning along the way, just trying to come up with a, with an idea, so that, um, you know, we keep, uh, good relationships going on and, and not, um, hinder any projects. So that's why I brought it forward tonight, to see if what we can do is let the, like I said, the people that have already, uh, written checks to, uh, move along in the program. Thank you.
And, and to give it a little bit of context for the members of council that aren't on C-TAC, um, and I think, uh, Councilmember Shepard will agree that, uh, even before he was on council, he and I were working on this program, uh, together. He is as, of, as a citizen, uh, he is a council member for District One. And so this was a several-year process. I think he was even working on this even before I come along. Um, and if I recall correctly, it was Councilmember Shepard when he was a, uh, citizen, Mr. King, uh, Mr. Kay, there was one other individual, um, that I can't remember offhand. But anyway, uh, so we, uh, worked with staff, we adopted, uh, a policy, we voted on a policy, and I think the big crux here tonight, or concern is, uh, and what we established in C-TAC was templates on how medians are designed, uh, or improved, I should say, how they're improved, the types of trees, the types of bushes, uh, whether they're curved, not curved, but now, uh, since the Green Book has changed, now all the medians have to be curved, uh, because of the caliber trees that we're putting in. So we put a policy, uh, we voted on a policy, we put that policy in place. Mr. Apkin's concern is, and one of the things that we did as far as a compromise, uh, when Mr. Apkin had come forward originally was, didn't know if they'd get enough money to be able to do the trees and the bushes, to meet the templates that are, uh, that were established. So what we decided to do is to do a two-phased approach. That two-phased approach is you can do the trees, the irrigation, uh, and then come back in a second phase and do the bushes. We also adopted a po- policy that if you didn't do the trees and, and complete both phases of the project, you can't move forward to the next one. So the hindrance, I believe, that Councilmember Shepard is talking about, is there are some other medians that they want to go in and do the grass and the trees and the irrigation, but because of the way the policy is written, they have to complete, actually, I think they have three medians, uh, or they have a couple medians on Sands and a couple on Aqualinda, uh, that they have completed the, the trees, the irrigation, and the sod, uh, but before they put the bushes in those, they want to move on to additional, uh, medians. The only problem that I have, uh, with that particular, and I think that's a discussion that we, as a council, since it is a quality-of-life, uh, decision, collectively by majority of vote, has to decide. That's why I thought that this would be better in a committee of the whole meeting, that we could have that discussion. Staff could bring forward the policies that are existing, and how we got to this point, and then as a council, a collective body, we can make a decision, do we want to stay with the same policy, or do we want to change it? One of the things that I think you have to keep in mind, there is a, an investment that the city is putting in as well. We're doing the curbing, we're putting the main irrigation lines in, and then once that's completed, we turn it over to the nonprofit, or to whomever is doing the improvements, and then they're going to go ahead and do the improvements that's outlined in our templates that have been approved. So that's kind of where we are today, um, and I think that's what, uh, the issue Mr. Apkin is having, is because uh, they're not allowing him to, uh, apply for any other permits until he finishes the, the medians on, uh, Aqualinda and on Sands Boulevard. So I think there has to be a change, uh, in the policy. We'll have to vote on that change, and at some point we'll have to vet whatever those changes may or may not be. I don't think today is the day to do that, but when I did bring that to the city manager's, uh, attention, uh, yesterday, uh, it was his recommendation that we wait until after, uh, the budget, uh, hearings that are for June the sixth and June the seventh. I'm thinking, well, that's only four weeks away. No hurt to wait till then, then possibly after that time, we'll bring that back for a committee of the whole meeting, or during our budget, uh, discussion. Uh, if we want to make the change, we can see where the majority lands at that point in time. So with that, I'll go over to Mr. City Manager, and I don't want to speak for you. I know I've, uh, said your name, uh, more than I wanted to, and then after you, I'll go back to Councilmember Shepard.
Well, first, let me say, just like the, the Burrowing Owl Grant, uh, situation, my staff and I are, are fully supportive of this program. We have a situation, and we have a program where private individuals and businesses can donate funds, uh, to the city in order to beautify it. And I think in all of the discussions that we have, we should not lose sight of, at the end of this line is somebody who's willing to help the city beautify the city. That's really what we have. In the middle of that person, and us being able to accomplish that, is our governmental policy. My staff cannot deviate from the policy that's been set by the C-TAC, who is the Transportation Advisory Committee. If they did so, I would be talking to them about being insubordinate. The only way to shake this loose is for the policy to be amended, if that is the desire of the council. There are some other ideas that possibly, um, could alleviate, um, getting the money spent on greenery and put into the ground. Uh, I don't know if those are options that you would all even want to consider, such that you all have money set aside to, to do beautification. If the individual group is not able to raise enough money to complete Phase Two, perhaps we use the city's money to complete Phase Two. Just an option. If a promise was made for a specific median, uh, to the people that is, was fund, that were, if, if the fundraising group promised a specific median, perhaps there's a, an opportunity for them to go back to the individual who submitted the, the check, to say that median's not available, but we have other medians in the city that are already curved with irrigation. I don't know if the donor would accept that, but there's definitely ways, uh, to resolve this. Uh, it is going to take, um, some thought and some collaboration, but I think in through all of that, I don't want to lose sight of, there is a donor on the other end who is a real person or a business looking to improve the city, and, uh, I'm here to support that. Whatever policy you all enact, uh, I will administer it, but at the end of the day, somebody's trying to do good in the community. Thank you.
Councilmember Shepard?
Yeah, let me give a little bit of history. Um, the mayor was correct. I started working on this before I was even elected to be a councilperson, and back then I was educated as a citizen that it cost the citizens of Cape Coral over a million dollars a mile to do medians. A million dollars a mile is what it costs taxpayers, and I'm sure it's a lot higher now, because as you know, we've had COVID and hyperinflation and the hurricane and everything else, and costs have even risen higher. Even with going through, uh, the hurricane and COVID and, um, hyperinflation, our citizens have stepped forward and donated, I believe, uh, close to fourteen to sixteen medians throughout the city. I would say it's well over a mile. We didn't have to raise anybody's taxes. It didn't cost us anything. It cost us a thank you, and it cost us, uh, creating a bureaucracy to work with the people of this city to beautify their neighborhoods. The stumbling block that came along is, um, going through that hyperinflation, uh, when, uh, as, as you know, the process of getting things done in the city, permitting, things like that, everyone complains about time. Takes a lot of time to go through the process. Well, if you look back on history of what the city went through, when the nonprofit applied to do Sands Boulevard and Aqualinda for the money they collected to do the medians, they had enough money to complete the medians, uh, one hundred percent, to the pallets that were pre-designed. But by time the project was executed, and by time there was available contractors to even do the job, because as we all know, that's another problem in our city. It's even when you have the permit, good luck finding a contractor that's not booked out, that can even do your job. So like I said, this is a learning poss, uh, learning, uh, situation that we're going through, with a great program. So what they accomplished in that Sands and Aqualinda, I'll use them as the example, is they accomplished putting irrigation system in to, to, uh, this, uh, being designed and approved by the city, to be engineered properly the way the city wanted it. They put sod in, and they put palms and trees in. And I don't know if any of you drove on Sands or Aqualinda, uh, I haven't heard one negative, uh, opinion. Uh, there's people that live in that area who are thrilled to death with how it looks. I haven't had one person say to me, where's the plants, or, or it's not going to be beautiful until it has plants. So like I told you, it's a, this has been a learning process. Back when we developed the pallets, probably, I think we started six years ago, um, we weren't looking at hyperinflation. We weren't looking at another thing that I, I didn't mention yet, availability. Right now, there's a lot of plant product, and even trees and palms, that aren't even available at this time because of the rapid growth that this state went through. So supplies are, are not available, and when they are available, you're going to pay big dollars. So one of the things that C-TAC, that we have to make a decision on, um, that, that the city manager has mentioned, is we have to decide, are we going to let, uh, these donators continue to beautify their neighborhoods, on if they don't have the money for the, for the plants, to still allow them to do the irrigation sod and trees? And I can tell you that I am very thankful for the irrigation sod and trees, and it has a big impact on the value of our community, and, um, I don't want to hinder that. And that's what this is all about. This is all about, do we let these people that wrote checks and, and, uh, continue, um, to beautify a median that they applied to do? And I don't even know, they might have the money to do the plants, but one of the rules that was made years back was that if an organization, organization starts a median, that they, they're not allowed to apply to do another one until their last one's complete, which makes perfect sense. But when you hear the history of what I just educated everybody with, what did I say? We're going to learn along the way. So what did we learn? We learned that it's a lot harder getting product today. We learned that the costs have gone up dramatically. But what do we know that we don't have to learn? We already know that we need beautification in this city. It's a big need. And I don't want to put a hindrance or a stop on that. I don't want to put a bad taste in the mouth of someone who's willing to write a check for ten to twenty thousand dollars, or a local, a local citizen or business that's willing to do that, to beautify our community. And I don't want that to happen. So what I would like to hear from the city manager is, does he see a problem with, uh, continuing another median, and if council decides, uh, today that putting in irrigation, sod, and trees, and, and not putting the plants in at this time, are we all acceptable to that? And I think anyone at home watching right now would be tickled pink if they got a median done in their neighborhood or in front of their house that has irrigation, sod, trees, or palms. And I don't think they would be upset about not having plants. So that's what this is all about. So that's what this is all about. So that's why I brought it forward. It will come up in a future meeting. But like I said, some of these people that are donating have been waiting for months and months and months and have written a check. And I am not putting any bad message out there that their waiting was the fault of anyone. It was the fault of everything that we all have been living in the last couple of years now. But we have been working through it and I think doing a great job. So our job's not over. And I think part of our job is rectifying this so that this can move forward. That's why I mentioned that in that future meeting, we will be deciding, are we going to let people donate and not put plants? That's a decision that will be made at that future meeting. But what I'm saying is, whatever that decision is, I'm fine with from everyone that writes a check from that day forward. But let's let the people that already wrote a check, let's not hinder them. Let's let their project go forward. And the city manager would like to comment on that. If that seems to be a problem, if that would work, that's my goal, to keep the beautification going and not put a stall. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Councilmember Shepherd. It would not be a problem if the policy allowed it. The problem for me and my staff right now is the current policy is to work through Phase 1 and Phase 2 to accomplish the templates that were approved. But if the council were to amend the policy, it's not a problem.
So we could amend it right now? Is that possible?
I don't see why not.
No, it hasn't been advertised. I wouldn't recommend doing it. If you want to amend the policy, then maybe put that as an action item. Would be my recommendation so that there is notice out there.
Could we make it so it gets put on the agenda as soon as possible?
My question, Mr. City Manager, you gave me the recommendation to wait till after the budget hearing. Do you want to do that or not? It's a simple yes or no.
That's a different question, different question. The question that I was asked first was, is there a problem? Could we administer what was posed? The question, so your question is, the recommendation to wait has to do with the fact that on, in the January budget hearing, we discussed a citywide assessment program south of Pine Island Road. That is being presented in June 6th or 7th. I can't remember which date. If you all adopt that, then every median south of Pine Island Road will have, will be improved within the timeframe that we select. So the issue of having to raise funds to get bare minimum or full templates becomes a moot point. That was the reason for a delay in figuring out what are we going to do with the policy was to see, because if you all say, we're going to fully fund this, then the issue is just let them put what's in the ground now. Because then it'll be, everything will be completed over it once it's done. As far as the adoption of the policy, I don't know, I don't have the backup with me. I don't know if the policy was adopted by C-TAC or if it formally came to council with a resolution. That's why I was saying, I don't know if they could change, I don't see a reason why they could.
And I'm not looking to alter what we're going to talk about in future meetings. I'm looking for relief for the two or three organizations that wrote checks. That's all I'm saying. They waited long enough. If there's something we can do to help, that's our job. It's not hurting anything. You know, we're going to make that decision down the road on how to move forward in the future. I'm just looking for relief. That's all I'm looking for.
Yeah, before I turn it over to Councilmember Long, one of the issues that I have in this policy, there's only five members here that are on C-TAC. The other three members are not. So you're going to ask three members to try to make a decision here tonight? They have no clue what we're talking about. So that's why I said that we need to put this on a committee of the whole, have a discussion. I would have done that next week until the city manager told me. I would prefer to wait till after the 6th and the 7th for the discussion. Now, I think at some point, we can revisit to see if that policy, we want to keep with that policy or move forward. But it's not like, ah, we got a policy. Let's, don't look at the policy. Let's go over here and just do it this way. And then we'll come back and we'll visit the policy. That's not how we do business here.
I think the history's wrong on what was said. Because when they realized they didn't have the money for the plants for Sands, C-TAC let them continue to do Aqua Linda. So we already let them continue another project from a different donor to do another job, another project. And I don't know why it's even here. Because at C-TAC, I didn't see a problem with everyone giving relief. I don't know why it had to be brought before council. And I don't think what I'm asking for is a big deal.
That's a member long.
It's a big deal to somebody writing a check for 20 grand that's been waiting for months to just to give.
I was going to say more or less what the mayor said, that, you know, respectfully, as much as I may or may not support the project, this isn't how we do things. I think the real question, to really put this to bed immediately, we could spend hours for this. I know for a fact we can, because we have at C-TAC, is, is anyone here really prepared or feels that they're informed enough to make a decision on this one way or another? I mean, if that's the case, then we can vote. But otherwise, I think that there's a lot of people that are in the same boat as me. The city manager said he didn't have the policy with him. I think the problem is that none of us have the policy with us. So asking us to change a policy that I don't have in front of me and haven't been placed on the agenda and had the opportunity to review it myself prior to this discussion, there's no way I'm going to approve that blindly. So I would suggest that we do a roll call or however you want to do it to see if anybody even cares to continue this discussion further before we decide whether or not we want to vote yes or no for it. Thank you.
Well, we've got a couple of lights on. We'll go through the lights first. Councilmember Stanky?
Thank you. Yeah, I think, I had, I have one comment and one question. And I am not a member of C-TAC, but I do believe in the process and I would trust their judgment and the policies they put together. The one question that I had, though, which I'm sure was addressed in C-TAC, is, and the reason why I ask the question is, I'd hate to see bureaucracy get in the way of philanthropy, I mean, for sure. And so for me, just a major question is, what is so important about the plants that the project can't be considered complete without the plants? I recognize that based on the terminology you say, there's a template that probably calls for a certain number of plants. But does that have to be true? And that may be the policy that we're talking about changing. And so then, my comment then is, I would like the opportunity, if we're going to change policy at this level instead of C-TAC, then I'd like for it to come before the cow so that we have an opportunity to chat this thing through rather than run our meeting longer than it's going to end up being tonight anyway.
Councilmember Carr?
Thank you. I'm not a member of C-TAC either. However, I thought the description was very well done. I mean, I have a pretty good understanding of what's being asked. However, if it's, if we could delay it a week, we have a meeting next week, another voting meeting, a regular meeting, correct, at 10:30 in the morning? Maybe we could put it, could we put it on that agenda? Get ourselves where we need to be to make a good decision on this? If there's a time, I don't know if the time is so sensitive that it needs to be done tonight. That I don't know, Councilmember Shepherd. But based on what was said this evening and given the parameters associated with the modification to policy to allow the current donors to continue with what they've already paid, you know, donated to, it's very limited in scope. We know what we're going to get out of it exactly, based on the other ones that are already completed, at least half completed with the trees, irrigation and grass. I mean, I think I have enough to make a decision tonight if necessary. But I mean, I think delaying a week would give further clarification to some of the questions that may be out there. So I'm in support of the program as well. I'd like to try to move through the red tape and make it happen. But if we're not comfortable tonight, maybe next week, we could be comfortable.
I guess the question is, Mr. City Manager, staff had the means to be prepared to bring all of that next week? And that's the first question. And the second question, do you stand by your recommendation initially?
I got both questions. The first, the first answer is yes, we could be ready. I suspect we have no less than 10 presentations on this topic. We could pull them all out. And the second question from the mayor, yes, I do, I do believe that if you all are going to make a decision to landscape every median south of Pine Island Road, then just deal with it then. It's, you're going to have landscaping, curbing, irrigation, Phase 1, Phase 2 throughout the entire Cape, south of Pine Island Road with that discussion. So they're two different, so we could be ready, yes. But you have a much bigger decision to make, you know, with that program that is pending. And that would solve all of it, all of it.
So is your recommendation to have this next week or after the 6th and 7th budget discussion?
My recommendation is to make the decision on what you're going to do with the median landscaping assessment program.
And when? That's the key one. Next week?
No, that, that meeting is not till June.
June the 6th and 7th?
6th or 7th.
So your recommendation is to wait to have those discussions and then incorporate maybe this discussion as well?
Yes, because if you all decide to move forward, then the question will become for, for the group, I don't know the name of the group that's raising the funds. Then the question for them is, are they going to return the funds or are they going to just plant it somewhere in a park? If you all don't, then you have to deal with it, you're going to have to deal with this issue unless you want to uphold the policy. That's my recommendation. If you all are, want to take it up next week and have that decision teed up for the 6th or 7th, that's.
All right, why don't we start with Councilmember Shepherd? I do see a few other lights on. You can incorporate your comments while we're going down the line. I guess our, our decision, do we want to have that discussion next week or go with the city manager's recommendation to wait till the 6th or 7th?
I see it differently.
Well, wait a minute, we're going to go down the line and then you'll have an opportunity. Councilmember Cosden?
Go with the city manager's recommendation.
Councilmember Stanky?
Next week. I want to go with, I look at it differently. I go with the city manager's recommendation for the entire project. But I also want the city manager's recommendation for expediting these, I think we're talking about two, possibly three donations. That's, you're putting it in a different way. So I am for expediting to three because these people have dug deep and are doing a wonderful thing for our city. And the last thing I want to tell them is no. I don't want to be the city of no. So what I am asking the city manager is, I agree, we should talk about the entire program at the date that you suggest. But what I suggest is the people, the two or three individuals, our organizations, possibly businesses, that already wrote a check, that we work with them. That's what I want. Thank you.
I'll go with the city manager's recommendation the way to the 6th or 7th. I'm not for circumventing the policy until the policy's changed.
I would agree with that.
I'm saying, yeah.
Let me, let me, the assessment discussion moving forward seems to be way down the line to me at least with regard to that. There's a lot of information I don't know about that, other than the proposed concept, numbers, all those things. I haven't, none of that information has been provided. So that I'm looking forward to listening to. But I don't know that I want to let these two or three medians linger in that decision, right? I mean, and plus, if we did move forward with the assessment plan to do all the medians south of veterans, that would not include the ones that have already been done by this entity, would it? If they've done, if they've been done to today's standards?
It would, and that's where, that's the question that's being posed in the policy.
That was my disconnect. In other words, you're telling me that every median south of veterans, if this were to move forward in the way that you may present it, the one, if they redid a median next week to the current standards to include curb gutter, you know, everything, you're going to redo that?
No.
Then why not allow?
The nuance here is, under the median beautification program, the policy allows the applicant to only, to only have to install trees, sod and irrigation. So the policy that was put in place through the C-TAC was to require the applicant, so if they submit a median, this table, and they put five trees in it and sod and sod, before they can go to the next median and put trees and sod over there, they have to finish this median to the template, which means they have to put in the shrubs and bushes. The issue that we have is, they've collected money for other medians' trees, but the policy is preventing them from getting those permits till they finish this one. So what, what's being asked is, can those people's money be put to work when the policy is preventing it?
Correct, so I understand.
With the, with the full-blown program, any median that is in Phase 1 that hasn't advanced to Phase 2, we would, we would advance Phase 2 and just complete it.
You would complete Phase 2, you would not redo the Phase 1 portion? So I guess then, I am relatively clear then. So you need a policy change to be able to do this two or three against the current policy that requires everything to be completed at the other ones.
That's what I've been, I apologize if I haven't been clear.
No, no, you've been very clear. I guess we're getting, we're co-mingling a potential assessment plan for the entire southern portion of the city with, and we're co-mingling it with this policy modification for three medians. That's where my separation comes. So I'm in support of allowing the two or three to continue. If we can come to a discussion and a consensus or, you know, to modify the policy change, that's what I would propose we bring back next week. Not the entire conceptual plan of southern portion of the city getting assessed, but just simply the policy modifications to allow these two or three to continue. That's it. That's what I was trying to support, to bring back in a week. That I can get behind. I don't necessarily, I don't want to tie it to the assessment. That's a whole other discussion. So that's kind of, I just, that's my final.
So, yeah, let's just play this out.
Yep.
The timing of that is such that we would come next week, council would make a decision on the policy, we'd get with the attorney's office, they'd amend the policy. It would have to be scheduled on the next regular meeting for adoption. We're at the timing of the, of the discussion on the, on the medians. Okay. So that's, the timing is, we're all going to arrive to the same place at the same time. Or possibly not even have to discuss the amendment to the policy if, depending on the vote on the medians.
We have a, well, and again, looking at the calendar that we just adopted, right? We have an additional meeting next week is why we have the ability to discuss it. Then we have a meeting on the 15th, the following week, correct? May 15th is another regular meeting. We could essentially do the vote on that meeting, correct? I mean, I'm just, and again, I don't want to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to move through this and I understand we want to try to move through this quickly. But I'm listening to Councilmember Shepherd and Mr. Abking and their concerns and what they're trying to accomplish. And it doesn't seem that, that difficult to do what they're asking. You know, with a simple policy change related to just these two or three and separating it from the overall discussion, that I don't know where that goes. You know what I mean, as far as timeline and application and? So I, and again, I could vote tonight if we had to vote tonight. I guess if it comes to that issue, I would vote in favor of it this evening to modify the policy based on the discussion we've had. So that eliminates next week. So I don't know what everyone else's opinions are. Mine is, I'd like to, I'm comfortable approving a modification to the current policy.
All due respect, Councilmember Carr, there's two options that we had going down the line. Next week's meeting? Next week's meeting or the sixth and the seventh of June.
Okay, then I'll, I'll say next week's meeting then.
Okay.
I saw an error here.
Hold on.
Uh, City Attorney?
Hold on, I have the floor. I haven't recognized yet.
No, I have the floor.
No, he did, and then it went back to the chair. Then we'll go to you. But Madam City Clerk, we have, went down the line, if my recollection is clear, five individuals from council made a recommendation to wait till the sixth or seventh, and three were for next week. Is that how you heard the roll call?
It is, but in addition, Mr. Shepherd also agreed to the sixth and seventh if the, um, three people were handled ahead of time, so he picked both.
Right. All right, so we have a majority of council that made a determination to take it to the sixth or seventh, which was the city manager's recommendation. So we do everything by a majority vote here. Unless someone wants to change their vote, we will have this discussion on the sixth or seventh instead of wasting all evening on this topic. So that's what we'll do. With that being said, we're gonna take a fifteen-minute break and we'll start our ordinances at seven fifteen.
It's always zero.
Oh, boy. Is that everybody? All right, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda is ordinances and resolution. 10A is public hearing. Quasi judicial hearings, we do not have any of those listed tonight. Item 10B is legislative public hearings. The first item on the agenda, public hearing item 10B1, ordinance 20-24 has been removed due to an amendment request to remove the arcade language and will be introduced at tonight's introductions under 10C2. So then we'll move on to the first ordinance, 21-24. Madam City Clerk, please read title.
Ordinance 21-24, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral, Florida, land development code Article 6, Parking, Chapter 1, Parking, Loading and Driveway Requirements, Section 6.1.8, Miscellaneous Parking Requirements, Regarding Supplemental Parking Requirements Within the South Cape District, Providing Severability and an Effective Date.
Thank you. Turn it over to Mr. Struvey. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, for the record, Mike Struvey, Planning Team Coordinator with the City Planning Division. The purpose of this LDC change is to take a incremental, further measured approach to provide for additional relaxed parking standards in the South Cape zoning district. Since 2012, the city has taken several steps to relax parking standards or implement parking reform in this area of the city, the last of which was last year when the city eliminated minimum parking standards for all parking lot sites in the South Cape zoning district. And these are sites that directly abut six city parking areas or separated from these parking areas via platted alley and includes facilities like Club Square and the Big Johns Plaza parking lot. The reason we're bringing this forward is because of some findings that were revealed in a study last year that was performed by consultants working on behalf of the city. And this, these results were found in the South Cape Parking Management Plan. And as part of that plan, as part of that data collection, people in the city were surveyed as to their attitudes and preferences regarding parking. And 79% of the survey respondents indicated that they would be willing to walk up to two blocks once they parked to their final destination. Based on that, staff was directed to revise our parking standards to conform with this particular piece of information, which we have done. We selected 660 feet as a reasonable distance that most people, able-bodied people, would be willing to walk based on dialogue that we had with the Public Works Department. The proposal before you this evening is to allow owners to count existing public parking spaces within 660 feet of their site towards meeting their site's minimum parking requirements. And you might want to think of these public facilities as occupying one of three different categories. The first would be on-street striped parking spaces. The second would be the six city parking areas that I mentioned earlier. And then lastly, parking facilities that either the city or CRA owns or manages that is developed for public parking. Property owners could use spaces in those facilities towards meeting their minimum parking standards as well. Staff is recommending approval of this ordinance change. The Planning and Zoning Commission did review this and they also recommended approval. We've had one phone call in support and I'm available in case you have questions.
Thank you. I now have a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 21-24, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearings now close. Is there a motion regarding ordinance 21-24?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd? Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, next item on the agenda, ordinance 27-24. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 27-24, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan of the City of Cape Coral, Florida by amending Policy 1.15 of the future land use element by creating the mixed-use 10 future land use map classification, providing for severability and an effective date.
Thank you. Good evening, Chad.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. For the record, Chad Boyko, Principal Planner with the City's Plan Division. This is ordinance 27-24. This is a text amendment for transmittable for you. It would create a new future land use classification called the Mixed Use 10, or MUCs for short. There are no specific properties that are currently designated for this or the focus of the amendment. This would just put it in the books as a possibility for a property or development to be future land used too. If this was transmitted this evening, this would go to the state and regional agencies for review. After their review, it would come back to City Council and then you would adopt it at a later hearing. We all know that the Cape Coral Comprehensive Plan was adopted in 1989. We've had mixed-use land use on the books since then. We've had several developments that have utilized that mixed-use development. However, at this time, there is no future land use classification which addresses mixed-use developments for larger unplatted tracks, and that is the goal of the Mixed Use 10. Some parameters within the MUCs would be the minimum development size for this future land use classification is 10 acres. So unless you had 10 acres on your property, you could not qualify for this new land use classification. The maximum residential density for this is 50 units per acre with a maximum floor error ratio of 3.0. So this is a dense and intense land use classification, sort of created to really maximize the type of development that can be put onto a property. We do realize that because of the density and intensity with this, you will need centralized utilities for any development within this classification to work. So therefore, we would put this on areas only within the city, within the infill or transition. We mentioned previously that there is no properties designated for this. The only zoning district that would work for this new classification would be a planned unit development. PUDs are a special district that allow for staff and the developer to work out certain things such as setbacks, height, uses, the location of such uses on a property. And that would be the only way that a zoning could be approved for this classification. The other parameters within this is that non-residential and mixed-use development can comprise 100% of the development within the Mixed Use 10. Residential development or freestanding residential development may comprise a maximum of 50% of the Mixed Use 10. In conclusion, we find that this proposed language is consistent with our comprehensive plan, Policy 1.19 and 3.3. And if adopted at a future council date, then staff would work to identify appropriate areas for this new classification. And planning staff and also the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend transmittal of the proposed amendment. I'm here for any further questions.
Thank you. I now open up public hearing for transmittal. If there's anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 27-24, please come forward.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Joe Mazurka is President, BGM Consulting here on behalf of the Blue Water Development Group. This, we worked with staff with this ordinance in developing this particular land use. This is a land use that if approved would be appropriate for the new Victory Park, the new, actually the new and improved and larger Victory Park from the one that you've all seen thus far. This particular language in this land use gives us additional density, intensity, and flexibility. And with those things in hand, it allows us the wherewithal to build a higher quality product. And we will have the right and the need, the necessity, to prove that to you by going through a PDP to get zoning. We think this is good legislation. We respectfully request that you support a motion to transmit to the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 27-24? Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion regarding ordinance 27-24 for transmittal?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any council discussion? Councilmember Long?
Yeah, Chad, real quickly, I guess I'm missing, I'm sure you probably would have included in the presentation, what would be a comparable existing use that we have that this is, I guess, trying to improve upon? And what would that density be per acre?
Existing development?
Well, sure. So what would be comparable to this, albeit minimized to some extent, otherwise we wouldn't be here, that they're trying to improve upon by creating this?
So the idea is to give something that has a little more, that has a little bit more development potential than our normal mixed use, which has like a maximum FAR of 1 or 1.25, and then the density is pretty limited. This would be something you could see, it would be something, you would get something similar to like a enhanced Coral Grove that's coming along Pallett Road, or if it was in certain areas, an enhanced, you know, Covan 47 style development, just on a larger sized property than maybe some of those. The Coral Grove property would meet that minimum 10 acres. But it would allow for 10 acres of development, you know, where you could go with a very, you know, high number of units and then a pretty intense 3.0 FAR.
I admit, my question is confusing. I'm still trying to gather it myself. But I guess what I'm trying to get at is if this does not get approved, what would be their maximum density for dwelling units per acre?
For Victory Park?
For existing, for under our existing code, if this doesn't get passed.
The mixed use would only allow for a maximum density of 25 units per acre and a FAR of 1.0 or 1.25.
So we would be doubling the density per acre if this is approved?
Correct.
And the justification on your end, again, I'm basically asking you to remix your presentation. What are we, how are we justifying them doubling their resident? You're saying it's because it's a larger project, there's more going on?
It's a larger project. It has the PUD zoning that would be able to, you know, sort of massage the uses and the setbacks and how the development was shaped, the access and things like that. And then also to the fact that it's on large parcels of property.
So it's your opinion then that the impact of what this looks, appears to be a doubling of the density is less realized because of the other components that you're saying are part of this?
Correct.
That's the idea.
The PUD allows for a certain degree of control by staff, the developer, and ultimately council when it comes for your approval to sort of be able to say whether something that is as intense or dense as this is appropriate for the location of where it's going to go.
And that's still going to come before us?
Correct. It has to come through a PUD, which is ultimately approved by City Council.
Awesome. Thank you for that.
Let's remember Steinke.
Thank you. Just one quick question on slide five, I guess it is. When it speaks of non-residential mixed use and then residential development, the residential development that could comprise 50% of the development, which I guess would be five acres, as little as five acres, is that both single-family and multifamily?
To my knowledge, it is not specified as to what that is. However, the uses, we don't typically also regulate dwelling units through a land use classification. We do that at a zoning level. So when that comes through a PUD, it can be specified whether it's single-family, duplex, multifamily, of what capacity and what size and type.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other discussion, we have a motion second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd? Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to ordinance 31-24. Madam City Clerk, please read title.
Ordinance 31-24, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, amending ordinance 56-07 of the City of Cape Coral, Florida, which was initially adopted pursuant to ordinance 23-04 on February 24, 2004, which directly established and authorized the financial borrowing of the City of Cape Coral, Florida pursuant to its commercial paper program, decreasing the aggregate principal amount of commercial paper obligations that may be outstanding under the city's commercial paper program, which shall be identified by a one-time reduction from $250 million to $150 million and providing an effective date.
Hey, thank you. We'll turn this over to Mr. Mason. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. Mark Mason, Financial Services Director. The ordinance before you, it basically restarts a program that's already in place with some minor amendments associated with reducing the original commercial paper program from 250 million down to 150 million and basically, you know, authorizing us to move forward with some minor changes to the program. And so just a little background on commercial paper. Commercial paper is a short-term debt instrument that's generally issued by corporations, governments that provide resources to, for either operations, especially in the corporate world and in government, for capital improvements. And so you use short-term paper when you have long-term capital improvements that may, the capital improvement itself may actually last longer than three years. And so you don't want to issue out the, or you don't want to issue the entire debt upfront when you have potential arbitrage issues that may affect you if the project isn't done in a particular timeframe. And/or, and so in effect, commercial paper is, again, it's a short-term promissory note that's backed for liquidity purposes by the government. In our case, it would be a covenant to budget appropriate legally available funds for that purpose. And what does that mean legally available funds? It's funds that are not restricted for a specific purpose. It doesn't include ad valorem taxes because in order to use ad valorem taxes, you need to have a referendum. So there's a long list of revenues that are available as long as it's for the purpose to which you're identifying the borrowing for. We, the city, had a commercial paper program here between 2004 and 2010. When we used the commercial paper program, we used it primarily for funding capital projects associated with the UEP. We would take it and utilize it during the adjusted prepayment period. And when we got an idea of the final term for completing the project, we would refund the commercial paper, take out the long-term debt, and finish out the project. What this allowed for is that commercial paper generally in a short-term environment has a much lower interest rate than the actual fixed-rate debt that you're going to finally issue, allowing you to actually have a lower interest rate when you're doing the adjusted prepayment. And so we utilized that particular program in order to do almost all of the UEP between 2004 and 2010. We also used it for land acquisition for the festival park. We also used it to build a couple of parks here. And when we had the idea, you know, from a design all the way through the construction timeframe, some of the timeframes were generally longer than three years. So we utilized the commercial paper until we got to a point where we knew what the final product would be and we issued out the long-term debt. And so commercial paper program then is really, it's designed as a flexible financing tool that offers inefficient, low-cost access to funds. The, in our case, again, you get the opportunity to actually then utilize these funds and only borrow what you need when you need it. And so we would borrow the funds based upon, you know, the need associated with the timing of either design work. And so during, if the design was an 18-month design, then you would only draw down the funds when you actually needed them to pay the bills. And in the construction side, you would actually probably draw down for the, usually the first three to nine payments associated with the construction before you actually took out the final product of debt. So the, so the appeal then, you know, becomes to allow you to utilize, it's more of a note, a pre-note issuance and borrow these funds up to the project cost. And we, generally speaking, we save a lot of money by doing that. In our case, you know, it's a continuing offer. Commercial paper has a limit of 270 days maximum before it has to either be refunded or paid off. And so the, in our case, if we were to issue $10 million for, you know, 90 days, it would be automatically reissued again unless we paid it off or redeemed it. So how does this program work? Again, as I just talked about, 270 days. Generally, it's sold in 30 or 90-day tranches with maturity ranges associated with the 30 to 90 days. Uh-oh, I've already taken more than five minutes and I'm only halfway through. You want me to stop?
Well, this is the same presentation that we've already seen, I believe, correct?
I have not given this presentation before.
No, okay.
But I can certainly speed it up.
Okay.
Okay. Anyways, it's usually, we use an underwriter, maturing, again, the rollover, I talked a little bit about that. And in fact, I gave you the idea of the money savings that you would see between a fixed-rate loan and utilizing commercial paper before you took out the fixed-rate loan. In this particular case, if I took out a fixed-rate loan over, upfront, it would cost about $3.5 million in interest utilizing commercial paper over the same time with only the draws necessary to meet the terms of the 50 million, we'd only be paying out about $2.1 million based upon the interest rate that we used. So there's a savings that comes along with utilizing this program. Again, we would utilize it for the utilities expansion program, land acquisition, with design work in advance of construction, also grant reimbursement anticipation. also grant reimbursement anticipation. Ordinance 31-24 amends master ordinance 2304 and ordinance 5607 reduces from 250 to 150. The, we've already, we have issued the request for proposals in advance of the potential of you passing this. And each city, each request for funding, it's important to understand we would not utilize the commercial paper without having an ordinance in place for the purpose to which we would be borrowing on commercial paper. So every tranche that we would come forward, every project we would come forward, there would be a new ordinance authorizing the use of the commercial paper, allowing for that particular purpose and for the purpose to which it's designed. And now I'm done and I'm sorry, it took more than five minutes.
Thank you. Now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 31-24, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearings now closed. Is there a motion regarding ordinance 31-24?
Motion to approve ordinance 31-24.
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Councilmember Carr.
Just hopefully a quick question. You referenced two other, two ordinances, two current ordinances that this replaces? Or can you, I mean, there's no reference to either?
It amends them.
Pardon?
It amends them.
It amends them?
Yes.
So this, this is a standalone ordinance that amends two ordinances?
Correct.
So let me give you, it was originally created in 2004. It was then subsequently amended to increase that monetary amount. And now this amends that very, very same ordinance that has existed since 2004.
It only amends certain sections of ordinance 2304 and 5607. 5607 changed the dollar value from one, well, I think it was 100 to 250. 2304 was the original master ordinance for the commercial paper. And so this ordinance, 31-24, actually amends five sections of the, of 2304.
I guess I've just never seen ordinances amended without repeal, replace, you know, through another ordinance mechanism. I would typically, I mean, again, based, based on my experience, the modification of an ordinance is done under that ordinance. So is this a different process than typical or is this?
No, I'm not, because we're not, we're not repealing and replacing. We're just amending an existing, existing code section with just that modified, modified provision.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Sorry for that question.
No, no worries. No, it's all good.
Okay. Seeing no other lights on, we have a motion second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinkie.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
Costin.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Eight ayes. Motion carried.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
We'll move on to item 10C introductions. Resolution 130-24. Madam City Clerk, please read title. Set the public hearing date.
Resolution 130-24, a resolution providing for the vacation of plat for a portion of the Southwest First Court right-of-way and all underlying easements located adjacent to Lot 1, Block 203, Cape Coral, Unit 3, Part 1, and Lots 34 and 35, Block 205, Cape Coral, Unit 3, Part 1, providing for the vacation of plat for platted easements lying in Lots 34 through 35, Block 205, Cape Coral, Unit 3, Part 1, property located at 5982 Southwest First Court and 5973 Southwest First Court, providing an effective date. The public hearing will be May 15th, 2024.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 20-24. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the first public hearing date.
Ordinance 20-24, an ordinance amending the city of Cape Coral, Florida Land Development Code, Article 4, Zoning Districts, Chapter 1, General Provisions, Table 4.1.6, Use Table, Regarding Social Services, Commercial Recreation, Indoor, Commercial Recreation, Outdoor, Commercial Parking Lot or Garage, Marine Fuel Pump, Craft Brewery, Distillery, Winery, Restaurant, No Drive-Thru Restaurant, Drive-Thru Distribution Center, Automotive Towing Establishment, Helport, Hel Stop and Live/Work Space Uses by amending Article 4, Zoning Districts, Chapter 2, Specific Regulations by District, Regarding Marine Fuel Pump and Craft Brewery, Distillery, Winery Uses, Amending Article 5, Development Standards, Chapter 10, Specific Use Regulations, P asterisk Uses in Table 4.4, Regarding Marine Fuel Pumps and by amending Article 11, Definitions, Chapter 1, General Provisions, Section 11.2, Definitions, Regarding Automotive Towing Establishments, Community Centers, Distribution Centers, Junk Yards, Live/Work Spaces, Marine Fuel Pumps, Professional Services, Social Services, Solid Waste Transfer Stations and Yards, Providing Severability and an Effective Date. The first public hearing will be May 15th, 2024.
Is there any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 30-24. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 30-24, an ordinance amending the city of Cape Coral, Florida Land Development Code, Article 7, Signs, Chapter 3, Temporary Signs, Section 7.3.1, Temporary Signs, Regarding Temporary Signs on Real Property, Providing Severability and an Effective Date. The public hearing will be May 15th, 2024.
Any discussion by staff or council? Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have some discussion I would like to have regarding this. Due to a, a little bit of a discussion in my one-on-ones this week regarding signs in the right-of-way. There is a table in this section that we are amending. And when you, when you read that table, it has the appearance, it, it may look like you're allowed to have three signs in the city's right-of-way. I, I just want to point out, so what's happened is that table's being repealed and the language that says you are not allowed to have signs in the right-of-way is actually going into a text version. But the, the existing language in the code today does not allow temporary signage in the city's right-of-way. And in addition to that, I had our special projects coordinator contact the top 10 largest cities today to just verify whether or not any of them allow any temporary signage in the city's right-of-way. And the answer back from all of them was no. The reason I'm bringing that up is specific not to political campaign signs or it's, it's more so for temporary snipe signs of any nature. Pressure washing, open house, you know, vote for this referendum. None of those signs are allowed in the city's right-of-way. I just want to make that clear because there is a, the table is changing, but that, the, the prohibition of that is being written into the, into the verbiage in the code. Thank you.
So basically, there's no change. We're just articulating it a little better, is what you're saying?
Well, there is a change. We are delineating with specificity the prohibition. We're also delineating an, an alternate enforcement process with enhanced penalties associated for those signs that are unlawfully placed within the city's public right-of-way. I want to be clear on that.
Okay. Councilmember Steinkie.
Thank you. Having quite a bit of experience in the real estate business, the three signs that were listed in the chart has caused a lot of confusion within the real estate industry, thinking that those three signs were allowed so that they could direct people to an open house for a citizen that was looking to sell their home. I would just like to make sure that all of the citizens listening in and for those of us here on council realize that when any of us would go to sell our home, certainly a for-sale sign is actually in, on the residential property. And it says for sale and a contact number to get in touch. When an open house is scheduled where a potential purchaser could purchase the home, could come to the home and view it, not having any, any opportunity for directional signs, the citizens basically have to find it on their own. So I, it wasn't allowed before, but the confusion allowed it to happen. And there were times when the city would kind of do a blitz and go out and grab all the signs. And there were times when the signs were okay. So however we deal with that, I, I think that there should be some accommodation for our citizens when they want to sell their homes, for their homes to be found, if you will. And so I know it's an introduction. Those are my comments. Wherever it goes from there is where it'll go. Thanks.
Councilmember Long.
It is an introduction, but again, I say, let's do it. So you're asking for us to carve out a specific accommodation for a certain industry as part of this ordinance? Is that what you're asking?
Um, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear. I mean, how does that, I guess, differentiate from me being able to see signs on the roadway that show me where the barber shop is so I can get my haircut? I mean, where do we draw the line on which industries we want to support?
You gotta come up with a better example than that.
That was the best. That was the best here.
Is it a rhetorical question or a question?
It was meant to be, yes. So that's, that's my only comment on that. And I ask that because I, I had this discussion earlier at the Planning and Zoning Board and I couldn't, couldn't wrap my mind around why, how we could support a particular industry or if it's even legal to support a specific industry.
It would be legally inappropriate because it would be arbitrary and capricious determination. We'd be exposing ourselves. Yeah, so I'm gonna leave it at that.
So I'll have to find my own barber shop.
I can help you.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Carr.
I just wonder if other sign definitions would meet the requirements that you were talking about, Councilman Steinkie, about directional signs. There's other elements of the code that are not, this is kind of specific, I think, with this change. But there's a whole bunch of other definitions and types of signs that are permissible. Sandwich board signs, I mean, they're in the right-of-way today. Directional signs, I think there's an exemption for those as well. Maybe, I mean, there might be another workaround. We can work maybe before we come back to vote on this thing, you might be able to work through some of those other permissible ways to get it done. So I mean, just going over some of the other sections of the code that we're not changing that may cover what the needs that he was just describing. So, thank you.
Councilmember Steinkie.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but an A-frame sign is a temporary sign.
Unless there's a specific definition.
There, there is. It's incidental sign in the code. So that's why I said, there's a lot to this. I think maybe this, we can have some discussion with staff maybe between now and the next meeting to figure it out. It's complicated, I know from my background on that.
Uh, Councilmember Shepherd.
Special events, signs be allowed, like special events, there'll be signs that are placed, parking this way and things like that.
As a guide sign for the special event?
No, like, not just special events that happen through the city, but there could be like churches and organizations have special events where they have a lot of people coming. And sometimes they'll, they'll put signs that show like this way to parking because they'll have temporary parking on a, on an empty lot and things like that. I'm just bringing it up because these are all the things that are.
If they pull a special event permit and the, and the sign, and the sign is permitted as a use to that special event, that because you think of a special event, it's drawing more than 500 people. So you're try, you're, you're creating an area where you have traffic volume and you're, you're trying to use those as guide signs for the traffic.
Gotcha.
And, and the spec, during the special event process, the height, the size, the placement, everything is regulated to not interfere with a traffic engineering principle.
Okay, seeing no other lights, we'll move on to ordinance 36-24. Madam City Clerk, please read title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 36-24, an ordinance approving and granting to Lee County Electric Cooperative, Inc., a perpetual easement for a right-of-way to be used for the construction, operation and maintenance of one or more overhead and underground electric distribution lines across property owned by the city that is in the intersection of Avril Boulevard and North Del Prado Boulevard, as more particularly described herein, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute the easement. A copy of the easement is attached here too and incorporated herein by reference, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be May 15th, 2024.
Okay, any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 37-24. Madam City Clerk, please read title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 37-24, an ordinance amending ordinance 15-15 as amended by ordinance 38-17 that approved a planned development project in the city of Cape Coral, Florida entitled Stonewater for certain property described as parcels of land located in Section 10, Township 44, Range 23 East, Cape Coral, Lee County, Florida, as more particularly described herein, property located at the southwest intersection of Tropicana Parkway West and Nelson Road, approving the modification of a condition requiring that a portion of the site be developed with non-residential or compound uses, providing for findings of fact and conclusions of law, providing for action on requests and conditions of approval, providing for legal effects and limitations of this PDP development order and administrative requirements, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be May 15th, 2024.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, move on to ordinance 38-24. Madam City Clerk, please read title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 38-24, an ordinance amending the city of Cape Coral, Florida Code of Ordinances, Chapter 27, Community Redevelopment, Section 27-1, Community Redevelopment Agency, Regarding Voting Requirements, Providing Severability and an Effective Date. The public hearing will be May 15th, 2024.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we will move on to ordinance 38-24?
35.
35? 35-24. Madam City Clerk, please read title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 35-24, an ordinance amending the city of Cape Coral, Florida Comprehensive Plan by amending the infrastructure element to provide consistency with the Cape Coral Water Supply Facilities Work Plan, adopting the 2023 Cape Coral Water Supply Facilities Work Plan as Appendix A to the Comprehensive Plan, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing for transmittal will be May 8th, 2024.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we will move on to item 11, Reports. Councilmember Steinkie, report.
Thank you. On the 24th, I attended the Tourist Development Council's Request Review Committee meeting. And I'm pleased that through the help of our city manager's office, we had a, if you will, a preemptive letter that was sent asking for reconsideration on requests that we had that were deemed ineligible. And it turns out that they were eligible based on a different subsection that is typically not considered by the TDC. And so we have upwards of about $800,000 that will now, will now be considered and we have kind of preliminary indication that it, that it will be, that it will be approved. So that was a good outcome at that meeting. On the 26th, I attended the Boards, Committees and Commissions Appreciation Luncheon. Hats off to our city staff and especially our master, our mistress of ceremonies, Kimberly Brunz, for doing a great job at, at recognizing those citizens that, that volunteer in a variety of ways. It was a packed house. Everyone, I think, felt appreciated and glad that I had the opportunity to, to be there. And that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Welsh, report?
No report.
Councilmember Carr.
No report.
Councilmember Hayden. I'm sorry, Costin.
No report.
Councilmember Hayden.
Thanks, Mayor. Real quick, I had the honor to speak and read a proclamation at the annual Arbor Day event last week at Joe Caviello Park where 140 trees were actually planted. And, got the one part right? More than one. And I want to thank the Oasis Middle School Garden Club for showing up and helping us put topsoil around many of those trees. And even the forestry department was there to pass out some native trees and they took some trees back with them for, for their garden. And I also had the opportunity to speak at the, at the volunteer luncheon as well.
Okay, thank you, Council- Councilmember Long, report?
No report.
Councilmember Shepherd.
Yeah, I went to the luncheon for the volunteers, and just want to shout out that we appreciate everything they, they've done for the city and appreciate them. Also, I want to thank councilmen for knowing the amount of trees that were planted at the park. I couldn't recall, but a hundred and forty, that's an awesome number, so when you add that to the other nonprofits, in one week's time, our city planted almost a thousand trees. So that's, that's great. Glad to hear that. Thank you.
My report back on April eighteenth, I attended the yearly dealer meeting for Nortech down at the Weston. Also, last week, I was, attended the Southern Municipal Conference Leadership Meeting in Mississippi as part of the Florida League of Cities, Member of the Executive Committee. Also participated in a telephonic meeting with Representative Congressman Donalds regarding the FEMA issue. Also, I attended a Zoom meeting for the Florida League of Mayor's Board of Directors meeting on four twenty-nine. Also, attended the Southwest Florida League of Cities Executive Committee Meeting on four twenty-nine. This afternoon, I was a guest speaker at Century Twenty-One. They hold a monthly meeting, and I attended that particular meeting as a guest speaker. Also, this afternoon, I presented a proclamation to the Southwest Florida for Kids, which is a National Foster Care Awareness Month this month, the month of May. So it was, I was glad to issue that proclamation to that organization. Also, tomorrow, I'll be traveling over to the east coast of Florida and attending a meeting for the, a mayor's meeting for the ten most populated cities. We have quarterly meetings throughout the state, so tomorrow, I'll be over in Fort Lauderdale for that particular meeting. Also, next week, I will be attending a National League of Cities event, a risk information sharing meeting as a representative of the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust. So this conference is in Utah, so I will be gone next week in Utah for that particular meeting for the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust. So I'd like to ask my colleagues, I know we have a, was supposed to be a committee of the whole, but it will be a regular meeting next week now, so since it's a regular meeting, I'd like to ask to be able to participate remotely for that meeting, so I'll make sure that, you know, whatever event that I'm attending out there, that I'll make time for my responsibilities here at the city, and be able to attend that meeting remotely, as long as, you know, my colleagues agree to that. So just want to make sure there's no issues there. Councilmember Long, I hate to throw it back at you, but you, you, you'll, you'll be running that particular meeting. And other than that, I think that's, next week as well, we have a CRA meeting, if I'm not mistaken, as well, so I'd like to participate in that remotely, and then after that, the regular meeting. And that's all I have. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Briefly, as you all should have received, I have admitted to you the proposed recommended orders that were submitted by the petitioners, the city and FDEP. That was filed on the twenty-ninth. It's anticipated that there hopefully will be the, the recommended order issued by the administrative law judge within thirty days of that date, but that is not set in stone, but that is the proposed, that is what we believe will happen. And if you have any questions, I can certainly speak with you about that more in detail during our one-on-ones. So, but that is, that is the current status of where it is right now. I will tell you, the petitioners did exceed the, the page, numeric page four, that proposed recommended orders. They've asked for relief from that, and so we're opposing that relief as well. So that may ultimately change kind of the circumstances regarding where it is that this ends, but again, we're very optimistic that, that the ALJ will find in favor of, of the city and FDEP and issue that recommended order for the permit.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one thing to bring to your attention. We have worked out a date for a joint meeting with the Charter School Governing Board for a workshop on the, the athletic fields and the amenities at that field. We are looking for June fourth, which is a Tuesday, and I just need to know from you all what time you would like to start the meeting, four PM or later, and then whether or not you would like to have it here or at Oasis, in case we want to see the field or the area in question before, before the discussion.
For me, I think we have the meeting here, and I think between now and then, we have the opportunity maybe to work with the city manager or staff if we want to go over and take a look at the field prior to the meeting. We would have that opportunity as a, as an individual council member, so. That would be my recommendation. Anybody have a problem with that?
No.
Different idea?
No, that's fine. Are we going to do like we do with the youth council, set the charter school board in front of us?
Yeah, I would say, put them up here. Make sure they got mics.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yep. Do we need a motion for that? For that, is that considered a special meeting, or is that just, is that a voting meeting? Is that a, just a discussion to kind of get a consensus, or what type of meeting is it?
So I would defer that to City Attorney. We simply identified the date and the availability of everyone, and now we have the location. There are, there is a resolution that will be brought back to you on the fifth, depending on how that conversation goes, for the contract, for the design.
Is there going to be action taken at this joint meeting? Or is it just a discussion and then the direction?
Yeah, I think council makes the ultimate decision. I, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, what we were looking for is at least a discussion to hear a recommendation by the school board.
Normally, these are, these are workshops. They're joint workshops, and so there would be no formal action taken. There'd be direction that would be provided either to the city attorney or to the city manager, and then we would implement that by way of a resolution or an ordinance as needed. That would be the normal protocol.
Okay. So basically, we just call it a workshop?
That would be.
Discussion, a joint workshop with the, with the Charter Commission?
Charter School Board.
Charter School Board. All right. So I guess we got to first make sure June fourth is okay, which is a Tuesday. And just remember, I think we have a meeting on Wednesday, and then Thursday and Friday, I believe, is the, so we'll be busy that week, Thursday and Fridays, is the budget. Do we think the budget? Well, it doesn't really matter. So is everybody okay with June fourth? Yep, okay.
I was going to suggest that typically, our budget workshops seem to wrap up early on the second day, so knowing that we're already going to be here for a regular meeting on the fifth, and here for a meeting on the sixth and the seventh, I was questioning if maybe we could do it on the seventh after the budget workshop wraps up, or if not, I'm going to have to arrive late to that meeting, so I won't be able to get here until after five o'clock that day. So four o'clock start time, I would just show up late.
All right. Everybody else good with the fourth? Four, four-thirty, five? What are we thinking?
If we have to accommodate a five o'clock?
Go ahead. You got the floor.
Okay. If we, if we had to accommodate five o'clock, start time at five o'clock, okay with me? Four o'clock's the earliest it sounds like.
School getting out.
Right, right.
Being, being a workshop, though, if I'm just okay to be late that day, possible. I mean, I don't want to push it to five, and then all of a sudden, my day frees up and I can be here at four. I would just like to be excused if I'm not here on time.
Four o'clock. Is that good with everybody? All right, June fourth, four PM.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Got anything else?
I do not. Thank you.
All right. Then it looks like time and place of future meeting, since we've changed our May eighth meeting. We'll have a regular meeting, the Cape Coral City Council is scheduled for Wednesday, May eighth, two thousand twenty-four, beginning at ten thirty AM, here in council chambers. This meeting is in lieu of the previously approved committee of the whole meeting that was scheduled for this particular day. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.